We'll call to order at 6:33 PM. We'll start with review of the financial clerk position draft coming up.
We appreciate being first on your agenda.
You're welcome. So Brian put together a memo on what you two were proposing. I know we met briefly about it. Maybe as a background for the rest of the board, questions about kind of the purpose or the goal or what the proposal is?
I don't have any questions about what was presented. The question I did have is, what would the, so we had a staff member leave, correct? And so this would be the same hours? What, the other one was part-time as well? No? Yeah?
Right. Well, it would take those hours that were in my office.
And split them?
No.
No?
Take some and from Jackie's office and make more hours for this position.
Rather than having an assessor clerk, we did some brainstorming and decided a financial clerk. So we basically, it's the same amount of hours that I proposed at the fiscal '25 budget for the assessor's office. And Michelle's hours are the same for the position that was vacant. Together, they, there were 19 hours.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure that it was adequate enough to satisfy both of those.
I had budgeted between nine and 10 hours, and she budgets 10. It's 19 because we didn't propose a benefited position to the finance committee and the select board. So we felt that it needed to be 19 hours.
Thank you for the clarity.
Thank you for that clarification. Not so much a question, but a comment on that is, I'd be inclined to believe for a 19-hour position, we might attract more interested candidates than, say, a nine or a 10.
Agreed.
That was some of that discussion, too.
That was also our thought when we started talking, so. And our offices do collaborate quite a bit. In some ways, we overlap, where like I'm component A and the task collector's office is a component B and that sort of thing. So a financial clerk could span both of them and get a better idea of the bigger picture.
I don't have any concerns with it. No objections to the proposal of the concept. It seems like it makes sense and, yeah, there, there is that carryover from one to the other. You set the rate and then she goes out and gets it, right?
I said, "You set the rate, then she goes out and gets it."
I do the valuation aspect in the assessor's office and she does the, she sends out the bills. But yes, this position would be clerical and in nature, they wouldn't, for the assessor's office, they wouldn't be doing any valuation. They would be doing the clerical aspects of it. Motor vehicle excise, bill issuance, processing abatements and exemption that came in, that general property record request, data entry as far as deeds and stuff like that, which is all nonvaluation.
And then on the job description specifically, I noticed you had meeting minutes. It was a expectation that they would be there after, outside of like normal town hall hours?
No, the, the Board of Assessors currently meets at 4:00 PM, which is in the office hours. We hadn't really, we wanted some flexibility with the person that we might hire for the hours, as long as they fit within the workday. So if it was, currently they meet the first and third Monday of the month. So if it was on that, there might be an adjustment. If it didn't work out, that was fine. It was just a potential expectation. Or if I was out, or the person taking over for me was out, then they would have to, you know, they could take the minutes. But my minutes are nowhere as complex as yours. Pretty simple.
That is a trophy we don't want, but thanks. One open item just before, you know, once this is approved before we go out is just around hours, which is an open conversation we need to have with the departments about office hours versus town hall open hours, because there's some inconsistency since COVID. So there's still some work to be done there to finalize what, just the general town hall hours versus office hours before that's posted to ensure that we're clear about what those are, right? That the expected hours for the week for potential candidates.
Well, we're thinking that the work hours would be the open hours. That's how we run our offices. So if we're, if we're there, we're open. So that would be the expectation of the clerical, the financial clerk would be that when they were there, the offices would be open.
And we had, yeah, we had had a conversation that if we wanted to make any changes to those open hours, we should do it before we advertise this position. So therefore, we could get those covered.
Correct, correct.
It's part of a larger discussion with the other staff at the town hall. And I believe we've talked about it briefly at staff meetings.
But some of the idea about combining these positions, too, and having the clerk was so that we could get a little more steady coverage, you know, some fill-in gaps if we needed to. This would be a nice position to work that in. So we'll talk more about that.
Yeah, and my reference was, we changed what the town hall hours were post-COVID. And outside of that was by appointment, but we have some departments in the town hall that have hours that are outside of that. And so then we end up with a situation, potential where the building's unlocked, but it's not staffed and expected to handle normal walk-in flow. And so those inconsistencies need to get addressed. And just, if that's going to impact, which it may not, these two offices, standard hours. And we want to make sure we're clear on that before we go out to hire.
Before we advertise, yeah.
Yeah. So that's still, that's where that's coming from.
Okay.
Any questions, concerns on the job description?
No.
No, it seems pretty straightforward and has been developed a little bit to get to this point.
Did the assessors review?
They have.
Already? Okay.
They haven't reviewed the slight changes where we were clear that it was under the direction of the task collector and under the direction of the principal assessor. But we had had, when I was in discussions with the Board of Assessors, they knew it would be under the direction of the principal assessor. So it was really just a clarification change in the job description. But they had talked about that, you know, being that they've reviewed it. And they meet on Monday, next Monday. So I'll give it to them again with the final, if they have any other questions.
Do you want to carry the meeting since we just got it? Or what do you want to do with the job description?
Well, we, it's not, we still have to work out the other pieces of the hours before this goes out anyways.
Before it goes out, yeah, that would be, that wouldn't necessarily be in the job description, being an ad, but.
Yeah. But I'm saying, so we wouldn't advertise for it anyway. So having this tonight versus two weeks from now, I don't think changes the timeline.
I believe so.
I mean, I'm not, I don't see anything in this description that changes anything. So there's not a need to carry it on my end. If you see anything that you want to review one more time, feel free. But I wouldn't be opposed to moving it forward and just get this piece of it done while we work on the other parts of it.
I have no strong feelings one way or the other. My only, if the assessors are going to review it next Monday night, if they have any other feedback that might lead to some changes?
I highly doubt it. I won't speak for the board, but they were pretty okay with the, and we didn't make any substantial changes. They were small word changes. Clarity on where, you know, under what direction, under what office the financial clerk would be working.
No, like I said, I don't have any hard, strong feeling one way or the other. That was my one, okay, 1% chance that they would want to change something else. I'd like to respect their position as a board and.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the financial services clerk job description as presented on 8/12/24.
I will second that. All of us in favor?
Aye. The only thing I would say is if there is any substantial, you know, change to it or recommended change to it, then just let us know. We can always bring it back and review it one more time and revote it.
I will. I'll put it on their agenda for Monday and I'll let you know on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Now, since this is a new position, is there another process of classifying it for grade and step? Or does it fall into?
It was proposed as B on the draft.
Right.
It's already there?
Yep. Class B because of the nature of the job itself.
Okay. I didn't see anything on the thing that said it.
This is our, our draft copy and not your draft copy, so we didn't realize it was graded.
Ours probably hasn't graded, right?
Thank you very much.
So it is graded.
So it's a grade B?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We are going to pass over a review of surplus equipment for IT again.
Okay.
Review of the community services cadet position description draft and approved policy. Chief Holst, if you want to come on up? Evening, sir.
Good evening.
So I know we discussed this for a little while last meeting and ended up deciding to bring both pieces back because of just the nuance between like when, when a role would change and how it would shift and things like that based on when a cadet becomes complete, you know, a qualified police officer or may need to be deemed such to continue their education, that sort of thing. So determined we would bring back the policy as well and try to maybe resolve some of those open, open questions, open items before we finalize the job description draft. Gentlemen, do you, either one of you want to start? Do you have items, I believe?
I do.
Starting with the policy first and then going back to the job description, which?
Whichever order you want to go. I'm assuming you probably want to touch on the policy because we were on the job description. We're coming back to the policy to try to get some clarity to determine the job description, right?
Yes.
So yeah, policy first or back and forth as appropriate.
Fair enough. I just, thank you. Go ahead. Sure. I'll go with a couple of things. So in reviewing this again, while we were looking at the job description, it brought up a couple of questions that I think I neglected to ask the first time we read through it. And, and that is, I didn't see anywhere in the policy that talks about the purpose per se as it relates to training and preparedness for, A, the full-time police academy, and then, B, long-term gainful employment as a law enforcement officer. And so it really seemed like it was focused on getting somebody in, having a clerical position that could learn, you know, do various tasks. And those tasks are all highlighted in there, but it didn't really capture the, it's a cadet program to teach them, like with an OJ, you know, OJT, on-the-job training for the components that will make them successful in completing the police academy and then long-term law enforcement career. And I don't know, is there a program that you have started to implement or, because I know you have sort of a, an officer comes in, if they're not a verified veteran officer that comes in with years of training, that vetting process is very simple, you know? But somebody who's fairly new, this is somebody who is green, who's done none of it. Having a training component that says, "We want to see these criteria successful before we send you off to a police academy." And the reason, what got me thinking of that is the piece I missed where it said, forgive me while I have to pull it back up. It would be preferred that the CSC attend the first available full-time academy. And that, I didn't, it didn't strike me the first time I read it, but it did when I was rereading it this weekend and later on today, actually, that they may not be ready for the first available. So putting a little clarity on, is there a training component in-house that says, "You've checked these boxes and now we want to send you to the academy?" Rather than, "We got a cadet, they got hired, they were with the town for four weeks and an academy's available. Are we just sending them?" Or are we putting them through some training in-house prior to saying they meet these thresholds and now we're willing to commit our time and money to send them to the academy to become full-time? And so that's the only piece that I was missing and questioning whether or not.
So do we have a training criteria? No. I didn't even think of it. And I think Selectman Loin can speak to this. When he worked for us, he created a field training manual that we typically don't use that field training manual for officers because we've been fortunate enough to get somebody who has time on the job. So we don't necessarily have to send them through a three-month FTO, Field Training Program. They would, this person would be required to go through that process. Does that mean that they can start to go through that process before they go to the academy? I don't see why not. Would they go through that process when they got out of the academy? Yes, if they hadn't done that. The thought process that I have behind it all is, is that this is an opportunity to take somebody, show them what we do, see if they're interested in what we do, you know, train them as to what we do. Training them, showing them, this is how our, you know, IMC works. This is how you write a citation. I'm not hiring this person to answer phones and make photocopies, although they would potentially be doing that at times as well. So it's, the training manual that we have, I would imagine we could use that as a criteria to make sure that they're meeting this. But I don't think that they would meet all of those criteria before going.
Yeah. And I don't think it would be the same as what you would do for a full-time officer for field training. That's not what I was proposing.
The phases and the steps.
But the idea that there's some sort of criteria, there's some boxes that should be checked, because I look at it both ways. We, we want to attract candidates that are available to us. And a lot of those candidates that are available to us are people that are interested but have zero training. And so, but, you know, they have the desire and we want to see if they have the ability to do it. And we want to see if there's a connection and a, and a match and see if it works out.
Absolutely, right.
So you do that. But I think part of that is, it's also your opportunity to evaluate whether or not it's prudent to send them to a full-time academy.
Right.
Because you might have somebody who comes in as a cadet, and while the academy might be available in six weeks after we hired him on as a cadet, you might get that feeling that says, "Nah, I don't think we're going to send this one."
Right.
But what are the, what's the objective category that would say no or yes? Or, and if it's a no, is it no permanently and we're terminating? Or is it no because they haven't met a few benchmarks that I want to see them meet before I bother, because it's.
No, that's fair because I.
It's expensive to send somebody.
Right. And that's fair because I can think of physical ability, right? Like.
Could be.
We would want them to make sure that they could get, they could pass the physical to get into the academy. That may not necessarily be a standard that we're looking for to hire somebody. That would, but that would be a standard that we would want to make sure that they can send them to the academy. So that's fair. I have not put any thought into that.
That's the piece that I was, so a lot of the comments that I have are related to language related to that piece of it. And it's modifying the language to sort of put an equal emphasis on not just getting them to the academy and having them become a full-time, but ensuring that they meet, meet benchmarks which would make them succeed at the academy. And so it's just a, it's a little twist on the language to sort of capture both at the same time. By no means do I want this to sort of delay this forever, but I want to make sure that when we advertise, people understand that there's a very objective goal of getting them to the academy in an effective manner and not just there because that's when the next one became available. And that they should show some proficiency in something, whatever that is. Whatever that, that criteria can be very minimal.
Yeah.
It could be the physical standards. They, you know.
I think it'd be communication.
They have to be able to communicate.
Correct. Be able to use a radio, physical standards.
I mean, if they've been with you for six weeks and they still can't figure out there's a delay on the mic and they, and they've been, they've been cutting themselves off when they try and tell you that there's an emergency at their location, you know, and they, they don't, still don't know where they are in town, if they're on, you know, North Street or.
No, I think that's a fair assessment. And again, I have it, I have it.
Just basics. Creating some, it could be just a one-page checkoff. Yes, 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 yes. Let's send them.
Yeah.
One's available, let's send them. You know, and it's already in the works and you don't have to worry about it. They go. But just something along those lines.
Just to speak, I think to the, to the point, Selectman Bassarash, the reason why we said the next available or soonest academy is, is that I think we were thinking, at least I was thinking, I don't know if I conveyed this to the town administrator, but, I mean, we want to send them most likely to the Holyoke Academy or to the Boylston Academy. And those academies usually run every six months. So I think we just didn't want some, I don't want a cadet that's going to be here for three years that's happy being a cadet. I mean, the goal, the goal isn't to keep him a cadet. So I think the idea was, is that knowing that there's, we're looking at two different academies and those academies usually run, they're six months long. So if you miss it, you're, you're going to be six months anyways with this person. And then you're probably looking at another month, month and a half before another academy starts.
Right.
So the, the thought process was, is like, okay, if they miss the first six-month academy, to your point, we don't have these benchmarks. But if we had these benchmarks, I would hope that in six months, seven months, eight months, we would.
Oh, sure. Yeah. I, my, the, the concept that I was working off of was, there was no benchmark. So we could hire somebody at any point in that progression. And it could be, we finally go through the hiring process, get a cadet in, but it happens to be three weeks before the Boylston Academy. I don't expect that our cadet would go to that one. You know, I, that's my thing is, they haven't proven anything. They haven't done anything to say that they weren't going to a full-time academy three weeks after being hired as a cadet.
Yep.
That's my, there needs to be some sort of level of proficiency or benchmarks attained before they go.
Yep.
So I think good summary of some of the things that I think we discussed last time. And I think taking and building out kind of what is a checklist of proficiencies that you would want to, you know, have a cadet achieve to then be ready to, you know, move them forward. But also, there's a time limit on that to become proficient. Maybe they stay a cadet longer because an academy's not available yet. But, but a time limit on that, either we achieve it or not. And then it's clear determination. If you build kind of that framework first and then come back to the policy, I think you'll find there's some changes, like in the first sentence where it says. you'll find there's some changes, like in the first sentence where it says, you know, develop their skills and knowledge while they wait for it full-time. It would be more of, you know, develop their skills and knowledge to achieve the minimum proficiency to be moved forward, you know, to the academy, right? And so that, that frame of mind and how you write that policy would change a little bit.
Yeah, it's funny you brought that sentence up, because I didn't have it as well written as you did, but mine was, instead of while they wait for it, was and get themselves prepared for.
Yep.
So it's just that, it's just that nuanced change. It's the same thing. They're waiting for the next one, but they have a task to do while they're employed with us, not just waiting.
And they're clear on, if they have that framework, then they're clear on what do I need to kind of show proficiency to you and to the department that I have?
Yeah, because I think we...
Because interest, well, that'll be their decision, right? If they don't have interest, then, then we'll part ways and, and so be it. And in that same first paragraph, it kind of, later on, it says to free up, you know, police officers for more time enforcement and other things, but really, community service is not meant to be, as you said, a permanent position. It's meant to be a, a period to kind of get accommodated, understand what a police officer does from the inside, and then determine that you're proficient and interested, and we can, you know, then look at moving you forward.
Agreed, yeah.
So, so maybe just kind of taking that lens to tweaking the policy as well.
Yep. No, that's fair. Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know where it falls. I had a couple of highlights of notes. One was that first sentence, but it was under the first set of bullets in Section 1. Do we create a bullet in there that talks about, you know, completing all required trainings and obtaining proficiency? And do we put it in that category, or does it fit better?
That's top of page two, just for reference.
Yes.
Those pages are the policy pages, yes.
Top of page two, yes. I think there was another...
Were you thinking down in training on page five, mid-five?
Yeah, either it goes under training and you have one in there, but then also under qualifications. If there's a program, you know, your qualification would be completing the cadet proficiency training. I mean, it could, you could design it so it's something that can be done in four to six weeks. I mean, it doesn't have to be a long, you know...
Right, right, right.
It's not in-depth.
Yeah.
It just has to have enough to say that, oh yeah, there's something here to work with, let's get them to the academy when it becomes available.
Because we're making that assessment anyways, as, but to have it, then they know what the standards are and...
To have it in writing, yes, yes.
No, I, I...
Yeah. That's really the only piece that I had on that, because that sort of touched on the, what's the precipice for why we move them and how they stay? And if the goal is, they obtain these proficiencies and then they just move, and they, you know, they go to the academy and then when they come back, they raise their hand and they become a sworn officer. And that's the way it goes.
To that piece though, because I had, I had spoke with the town administrator earlier, and, I mean, we can obviously have this discussion. My interpretation and my understanding and the way I thought I've conveyed it, and maybe I haven't, is that when they start the academy is when they would become police officers. So in having conversation with the town administrator today, I'm going to be reaching out to the MPTC and Post this week to just get clarification. Do they have to be sworn police officers?
To attend.
To attend. So in that piece, we don't know yet.
Yeah, I...
And that would probably dictate or drive whatever decision you, you guys want to make, but personally, my personal opinion is, without having confirmation from Post or, or MPTC, is that if they're going to be starting day one, the academy, in my eyes, they would be a sworn officer at that point. But I think we have to get that piece from MPTC and...
Yeah, that would dictate, you know...
A lot, right.
A lot on that determination. So that was the, the policy piece of it.
So it is...
I was going to say, I've been trying to wait to get a word in edgewise. I didn't want to talk over anybody, the new me. With regard to the, your comments, Scott, I do agree with you, and as you were talking, I actually gravitated towards the Knowledge Skills and Abilities section, and that last bullet, I sort of developed here, you know, upon completion of Phase 1 or whatever it gets titled, that for a set of goals, the CSC would attend a criminal justice academy within first available or reasonable amount of time. And just, that's where I had it.
Yeah, I can see that as well.
It certainly has other places where it could. And one of the other questions, and again, this is just for clarification, because I see some gray areas and I get nervous how that shakes out in real life. Under general conditions and guidelines, going back up to the top, it mentions they're prohibited from carrying a weapon. And so that sort of loops back to job description, which we'll get to, and under skills, it's knowledge, ability and skills, should have the ability to safely handle a weapon. So those two things kind of contradict each other, where they live separately. And how does that relate to, and maybe I'm taking it too literally, but under, you know, the job and environment, says they should be able to handle standard officer equipment. And one might make the case that weapons are in fact standard equipment for an officer. So like to see that sort of fleshed out a little bit.
Okay.
And not that it's not good or it's going in the right direction, I, I just think down the road that one crazy situation that none of us can foresee, and now there's a gray matter.
Well, I think to that piece, I mean, again, I go back to what Selectman Ambassador Ash said, I mean, about the benchmarks. We could make a qualifying part of it, but I don't think, I mean, I don't think we want to get into cadets carrying firearms.
No, no.
So I want to make sure we're all on the same page there.
No, we are.
Like I said, I'm not, I'm not looking to advance that, I'm looking for, you know, clarification.
I think through the benchmarks, that could be an achievement, has to be able to go to the range, would have to run through a firearms course, would have to be, I mean, we want somebody, I think it said that they have to have an LTC to apply, or have to be able to obtain an LTC.
Right.
So especially now with the new, with the new laws, I mean, that, that in and itself could be a three-month process. If somebody comes to us without an LTC...
Right, with all the background checks.
Without, with all that stuff. I mean, so I think people that are going to be applying for their LTCs moving forward, you know, in October, are going to be much more equipped with better knowledge and understanding of firearms. So, but I think that that can be accomplished in the benchmarks. We could still put them in situations to fire a weapon, be on a range, show proficiency, but not carry.
But I think that clarity, not only so it's clear, but we're also potentially talking about someone who has no familiarity and doesn't even have the distinction. We have the distinction, I think, as we're looking at a job description side by side with a policy, we're going, okay, we want to know you can handle a firearm, you can get licensed or are licensed, can show some level of proficiency in handling, but you're not going to carry it outside of that range time or that proficiency training with the armor, with the sergeant, with the chief, whoever that might be.
Right.
You won't carry it. You're going to learn to use standard equipment, those only in the training period, other things day-to-day, right? So just teasing all that nuance out, right? Read this like you've never walked in a police station and done anything as a police officer.
Yep.
It's a little different than most policies where there's some level of just given knowledge and common sense that we apply.
Yep.
So, I don't want to cut it short, so if you want to come back to it after the joint, that's fine. If we don't, and this is a good starting point to come back with a, some edits.
No, I'll save them, because the only other comments I had at this time, hard to believe were grammatical in nature, and those can...
I can't find them.
Mine were only formatting, and I won't blame you, I'll blame the computer for that. So that's...
So both of those can wait until we have a more complete...
I will yield, yeah.
Well, if there's a grammatical error in the policy, you all already looked at that before.
Yeah. No, that's...
Hey, we miss them too.
Listen, when I read the policy, I said, man, why didn't I think of this the first five times we read this?
And this is all new to everybody, right? I'd rather get it right.
If you prefer, I can just send you an email with any of the things that we didn't discuss, because they're not substantive in nature that weren't already discussed this evening, and that way...
Well, and they may, and they may end up changing anyway, as we drop edits again.
Right, yeah, okay.
We're going to move into the cruiser if you want to stay.
Do what? Oh, cruiser.
It's going to be the first one of the...
It'll be the first of the joint, so...
So are we going to come back to this afterwards, or...
I think, did you feel sufficient feedback to make some changes and come back to us?
I have, yeah, I think just getting that, getting that, that benchmark thing, piece, and then if you want to send me your emails, I mean, obviously.
Yeah.
So, yeah, why don't...
I think we're still a little ways away from...
You build that benchmark and that framework, what that'll look like, and then incorporate any edits into the existing policy. When that's ready, let me know. We'll put it back on the agenda, we'll come back, we'll go through the policy again, and then it'll probably lend to the job description once we kind of iron that out more.
Yeah, that's good.
The last thing I'll add is just the timing and clarity on when an officer become, when they have to, right? Which you're finding out.
Yeah.
And/or will, even if they're not ready, we don't have an academy yet. Like, where is that transition point?
Yep.
Is really critical in understanding for all of us.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, with that, I will call the joint meeting with the Finance Committee and the Capital Planning Committee to order at 7:09 PM. Come on up. I was just counting quorum on my head. Yes, I was, you're right.
I wasn't looking. Still trying to find my place in the pack.
Welcome. Thanks for joining us.
To whom?
Thank you for your patience.
Pass it along. Pass this across to Dan, please.
Ah, got it. Yep, I think they all heard it.
Looking back and stand.
Right. Take one, pass it down.
The last time I stood up, I pulled the entire table with me, so it was safer if I just stayed seated.
We changed them to the chair instead.
All right, welcome. So first topic we're going to jump into is the last thing on the agenda for us, which is discussion regarding unanticipated repair of the police cruiser. And we have Chief with us as well for questions, et cetera. So maybe to open it up, the cruiser was brought in for some repairs for a variety of different reported issues back in June, late May, early June, I believe, had a variety of things done to it. And if I recall, and I have a copy of it, if people would like, we spent about $4,000 on repairs, about $4,280.08, to be exact, I guess.
About.
About, about, or thereabout, on a variety of repairs. So that was basically beginning of June. And then had some further issues with it more recently in the last two to three weeks, and brought it in again, and the dealership determined that the transmission needs replacement, my understanding. And they provided a quote, which I have not completely deciphered, so is that what that bottom number is supposed to be? Because there's a few different things in there and they look repeated, and so, Chief, are you clear on what that total?
Yeah, so it was transmission work and it was AC work, air conditioning stuff.
That are combined in the quote that we have now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
And that 70, is that the 74.62?
Correct, sir.
And 82 cents?
Correct.
Estimate. And it looks like probably about 1,000 of that is AC work and the rest of it is all transmission?
Transmission.
And this is the 2017 Ford Explorer, it's the last non-hybrid that we have, I believe, and the oldest, is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
And just to, just to back up just a little bit, that we had, in, we had some April, some early April fixes on it as well, and then we had some early FY '24 fixes, January, April again, and then the big one that you were quoting was in June.
So obviously, you know, a large repair in June, a variety of things, I think there's probably 10 things on that list. Different, different things, some were housekeeping, some were maintenance, some were, you know, various troubleshooting issues.
Yeah, for a while, we had that check engine like that we were trying to figure out.
Right.
That was early FY '24, or January, so halfway through FY '24.
And then some of that 4,000 was like, you know, brake pads and oil change and batteries, so normal stuff, but some of it was more break fix type stuff.
Yep.
So having now the kind of $7,000 E&amp;L plus repair in front of us on top of that, just wanted to, hey, obviously bring it up to everybody, make sure we're aware, and, you know, before we move forward. Were there's any questions or concerns about it, or?
My concern is, we've got a 2017 cruiser that's obviously been through years of service, you know, some hard driving, hard conditions, all of that. I look at a $7,500 bill, and I have to ask, are we throwing good money after bad? And what other options are on the table? I know during budgeting, we looked at a replacement, but, you know, I just hit 4,000, now 7,000, now three months down the road, is it another 3,000, 6,000?
Yeah, I don't disagree, but we need it.
Right, we don't have a crystal ball, and, you know, I know we need a sufficient fleet, otherwise we're just putting extra wear and tear on the other vehicles and shorten in their lifespan as well. But...
Do you have a timeline on those repair, on the repair, replacement repair?
From Ford? So just to be clear, this quote came while I was gone on vacation, and so Adam, Sergeant Pickles, was working with it. From speaking with him, it sounds like Ford was waiting to get the approval because of the amount before they ordered the parts. So my understanding is, is that they don't have the parts yet, so I'd imagine it's going to be a couple of weeks anyways. I mean, we're still waiting for parts for our cruiser that was involved in an accident in the end of May, so we're still down there.
So we don't have a firm timeline on what that would be, once we give the okay if we did?
And dealing with Ford and Northampton, they've been good about realizing the need for it. I think once they got the parts, they would get it on their list to get done. I could ask that, but no, we do not have a timeline. Yeah, I know we've talked about the ACO vehicle in the past as well, and, you know, we've talked about maybe this could be refurbished into an ACO vehicle down the line, so, you know, to your point, Selectman Loin, throwing money, throwing good money at, at, you know, potential just problems. But, I mean, we could repurpose that car. I know that we're nowhere near hiring an animal control officer or anything like that, but that is a goal, and that did come up during the last budget process of turning that car into an animal control vehicle.
You open for comments?
Yeah. I see no reason to not fix the vehicle, because we're not in a position to buy a new one today. Finding the means to pay for it, we'll have to look at where we can, you know, pull from to make that happen. The last line of the memo talks about, you know, looking at the life cycle of the cruisers related to purchasing. I know that was talked about ad nauseam throughout every budget cycle, and with, you know, you sort of play that guessing game, is can we stretch it for another year or two? We've done it with the fire department for, I think, 15 years. So, you know, you have to, in today's times, we're trying to stretch it as far as we can. This is the flip side of that, and sometimes you have to pay a little bit extra money on things that you... This is the flip side of that, and sometimes you have to pay a little bit extra money on things that you didn't want to or hope that you don't have to. It happens. I think if we get the transmission fixed and get the AC working again, it's a viable vehicle, hopefully, for at least another year. And then if not longer, if it gets repurposed into not a daily driver, but a occasional, as like an ACO vehicle, with a lot less use, wear and tear, and some more life out of it. So, I would concur that just really looking at for, sometimes for the police vehicles, it's not so much the years, or even the miles. The hours that those are on. There's idle hours. There's, there's so many factors that go into it. They're not driven the same as me just going to the grocery store. It's driven a little bit differently when you're in pursuit of somebody, and, you know, so it's a little bit different wear and tear. So, yeah, I would agree that we have to find a way to fund it, move forward with it, get it fixed, because if we go down a second vehicle, now you're really in trouble.
We are already down.
But I mean, if you go down longer.
Yeah, right now, we're running our newest car, which is pretty much being run two shifts every day.
Right.
And then now my, the admin car that, that I drive is now being for a backup patrol car.
Right.
So, which I'm, I'm fine. I don't, it's not like I travel far to get to work and stuff.
Yeah.
It's, and that's really not set up for patrol work.
Right.
Questions, concerns, yeah?
What's a new cruiser cost roughly now?
I, I, the last one we quoted out was the, the E, the electric vehicle. And that was minimal lights and stuff like that in 57. Is that sound right? 57, but that's, that, that's not much. I, I've been told that they're probably about 70,000 to 75,000. I thought that we had gotten a quote. I could be wrong, and submitted a quote, because we were hopeful that we would replace this, and I thought that was 70, 75,000.
And when you're talking about all the upfitting with the lights and the cages and everything that is needed, that's, sounds about right.
I, I asked a question. I suspected that was close to the answer, but I asked a question so that anybody listening will understand. Seven or $8,000 to fix this one sounds like a whole lot of money. And I don't disagree with Slock Menloin that you want to be cautious, should not just throw money down the drain. On the other hand, we don't have $70,000 available right now. So I would move that the Finance Committee recommend that we go ahead and get this one fixed from a financial point of view, if anybody would second that.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Any extensions? Question, any mislike?
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all.
So, so, recommendation.
Oh, thank you, Finance Committee, I'm off here.
Ready to go?
Way to go, guys.
So, I, I think it's early in the year to figure out if we will have a shortfall from a larger than normal, based on all the other maintenance that will occur in the next, you know, 10 months of the fiscal year. So, just kind of in the back of your minds, there might be a point where we're looking for a reserve and transfer, you know, depending on how that goes, moving this forward. And I agree with you, Dan. I mean, just from a, I think, capital, from a capital perspective, from looking back when we had the Charger, most replaced under insurance, was a, with a Explorer hybrid, and that was probably the, one of the last Explorers we got. And it was about 62, and that's not everything outfitted, because there was some salvageable equipment, so. So I think easily getting into the 70s, and if we try to stretch out vehicles to, you know, eight, 10 years, or, you know, quite a bit longer than we had in the past, is part of that discussion. 70,000, you know, over 10 years is 7,000 a year, so is it really any more than buying new? You know, if, if we're paying 11, 12, 15, then yeah, you know, I think our maintenance costs are exceeding our return on it at some point, but.
Good point.
As a single, in this fiscal year cost, at least. We'll see how it goes from here.
Just as an idea, last year, the capital request was $71,894.40.
Right, right there. Yeah.
Thank you for pulling that up.
So I don't, I didn't sum up all of it, and some of it was general maintenance. I think it was under seven last year, even with that last $4,000 repair in June, like right at the end of fiscal year. But definitely getting near that seven mark, and, you know, if we said the average over 10 years is starting to be a tipping point. You know, and I know there's a lot the capital's talked about with fleets and the vehicles and deciding what are the parameters and variables. Maybe this is a variable that start thinking about, what's our life and what's that cost amortized over that, so. Any concerns on the board on moving it forward at this point?
None.
Okay, go ahead. Let's get it fixed.
Yep, thank you guys very much.
And you give us an update on ETA, once you give them the okay on what they think? How long till we get it back?
Yep, and then on, on the other car, I did speak with the, the auto body today, and they did finally get the part available, and it should be coming sometime this week, I'm hopeful this week. So, he said, once he gets that, he can put the car back together, and hopefully we'll maybe two weeks have that one back, so.
Okay, that was going to be my follow-up, so good. At least we'll get one back soon.
Yeah.
Cool. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay. Discussion regarding the former IP website.
So, should be included in your printed materials, and I emailed a copy this afternoon when I got it from Time Bond. It communicated the guidance that you gave from your last meeting, that you wanted to have an option presented to you that minimized any infill or reconstruction, maximize as much demolition progress as possible. And avoided some of those roof repairs that had been contemplated before. So the proposal that came back, and there's a printed copy in front of everybody, if it's easy to look at that while you're looking at this. Was to maintain 7A and 7B that you saw at your meeting two, three weeks ago. Those are the steel, structured buildings towards the back of the property. There's a question mark about whether or not to remove the slabs, the concrete slabs that are there. Those are left in place. It's not going to be a detriment to the property, but that would save you, they're estimating approximately $60,000 in, in costs, and you could repurpose that somewhere else on the project. But that's a question for you all to answer. The proposal that you have now in front of you recommends removing, and it's hard to see it on the schematic you've been looking at, but it's called 5C. It's a lean-to structure. It's the closest building to the river. It has no, beyond the foundational walls and, and the one exterior wall and the roof structure, it has no other attachments to the rest of the facility. So taking that structure down and removing it is not going to create an infill requirement. What it does do is provide, it's narrow, but it provides access around the building, so we can hopefully get the equipment up there. This does require, and they point out to you, that we're going to have to do some, some bank work and some shrub removal. There's probably some environmental permitting we're going to have to do to, to create that access, but that will get you back to do 7A and 7B. And they are estimating, I think it's approximately 75?
For which piece?
Sorry, 60 for 5C. Well, the permitting with it is 70-ish, 60 to 70.
68, yeah.
Yeah. So then the question was, even with those options, we still have a pretty large sizable piece of our $600,000 site readiness grant that could still be purposed. But we're getting to that point where demoing another section of the building may be too cost prohibitive, so there's a tipping point, right? So the question became, with the next two recommendations, do you do these as bid alternates? So that we don't risk not having a successful bid, but we can hopefully maximize the return on investment. So the next recommendation that Time Bond would make to you is going to, and that's the second page. It's called 5D. They're focused specifically on the smoke stack for the first option. It's largely independent. I mean, obviously, there's connections to the rest of the facility, but it's largely independent as a structure. If it was to come down, you're not going to have a large infill that needs to be done. And you get the added benefit of, one, having that material off the property, but, two, removing the risk of it collapsing. If it collapses on the structure, you may have a new problem that we need to rectify. So you could treat that as a bid alternate, or you could treat that as part of the base bid. They're estimating that that stack is about $75,000. So based on the earlier estimates, if you're liking that approach, that $75,000 would fit into what you have available for, for funding. The next option would be the attached boiler room. And for those of you who've been in that section of the facility, you did brownfields remediation work about four years ago, enough, three years ago? It was during COVID we did it. So the boilers were all disassembled. All the hazardous materials have been abated. So what's left in there really is the shell of that room and the steel of the boilers. And so it may be an attractive bid alternate to remove that structure, remove those furnaces. The infill, there's two doorways, I think, that enter that space. And you may have to do some patching just on the roof, where you'd be removing a section of roof, so you just need to shore up what's left there, so some finish work. It may be an attractive bid alternate. But there shouldn't be a lot of reconstruction or infill costs associated with that.
Was there an estimate on that boiler?
Yeah. There.
95?
There may be a little abatement for some of that roofing material, but the rest of it, like I said, is done. They're estimating 95,000 on, on that work. You would have to do a little bit of infill work. And have to patch that, that roof, so they're estimating that work at about 46.
46,000?
Correct.
Okay.
For the infill work, 95 for the demo, 141, I guess?
Yeah.
All in.
And you all looked at a proposal the last time that included two roof repairs? One of the roof repairs was in the section. So you'd be removing that structure. So yes, you're patching, but you're patching what's left of the structure as opposed to fixing this room, if we've decided that the room's coming down anyhow.
Yeah.
Could I ask one more question? On, on 7A and B, what was, was that? Leave it or?
7A, 7B.
It was abatement and demolition of building A and B for 82,000.
Now that is removing, this new price is removing the slab as part of that, that demolition. So this is assuming that we're going to leave. Right, this 82 is a, is a reduced number from what you saw a few weeks ago, assuming you wanted to leave the slab in place instead. So it'd be the structure, it'd be everything else would be removed.
So if we wanted to take the slab out, we'd have to add that back into this.
Correct.
Okay.
So without the slab, was somewhere between 350 and 400-ish?
304.
304.
304.
Well, hang on. There's a lot of components, right?
So 7AB demo and structural repair, it's still 40 in structural repair there, too. They're saying on AB, 7AB.
Right, there are some.
So it's 100 and, 122 for demo and repair to get 7AB down. And then they also are identifying up to 57 in abatement for that one. More, 57 more.
Most of, they're putting roofing abatement in there? Those are all structures that were built after 2000 or late 90s. So the idea that they have asbestos in the roofing materials for that section are very low, but they're carrying a contingency. Most of that is the cost of the temporary road to get up the embankment back there. It does adjoining Building 5, and Building 5 is a very old structure, early 1900s, that likely does have asbestos in the roofing materials. So if there's any material overlap there, there may need to be a small amount of abatement for that piece.
So, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this fully. So if we wanted to do 5C, 7A, 7B, it's 304.
Correct.
And then if we wanted to do 5D stack and the boiler room, it's 280, 800.
Correct, right.
Okay, so in theory, we could do both of those with that 600.
Correct.
Okay.
The idea of doing it as a bid alternate is just because we're not, they try to, they try to be realistic about the numbers and put in those contingencies. The bidding market sometimes has a bit of a mind of its own. Depends on how hungry a, a firm is for the business. Sometimes we've seen really tight bids, and other times we've seen a widespread. So sometimes a bid alternate gives you an opportunity to prioritize the work. That base bid is, is absolutely going to get done. And then there's goals that you have that you think you're going to fit, but you're not quite sure. And if you list them as a bid alternate, and they do come in too high, well, then you have an opportunity to still award the bid, the base bid, and proceed. You don't run the risk of failing the bid.
Okay. Now, the slab, the slabs, if we were to leave them, is, this is site, I know in some instances, if you have a building, for instance, that burns down and they leave a foundation. Even if the zoning has changed, as long as that foundation is there, they can rebuild on that foundation. Do we run into anything like that with these slabs? If we were to take them out, would that change what someone could do down there? Is there, I guess, is there a benefit for reuse to leave those in place?
I think, and Jackie can always correct me if I'm wrong, I know she's still in the room. I think that from a footprint standpoint, which is the question you're asking, you absolutely have an opportunity to rebuild on that footprint if we have not removed all of the foundations. With that being said, this is a 40-plus acre parcel. So how we divide up that parcel, I know we've talked about different ways to subdivide it. We probably are not going to have a density issue there. So it's probably less of a concern in this instance, but I think it's a valid point. Leaving the structure keeps at least the opportunity open to say, if somebody really wanted to rebuild on that footprint, it was already, it was already in existence. Is that fair? By your limit.
Thoughts on the proposal?
I mean, it, really from my quick math, there's some road and abatement of 57. We've got about 85 of repair and rebuild. And the rest of it should be demo, we hope.
Which is what we were hoping for, the predominant amount of the 600 being for actual demolition and not rebuild. So this, this finally hits, I think, the, the specs we were asking for.
I mean, it's less than 25%, I think, in rebuild cost. I mean, obviously, there's 30% in contingencies too, which in engineering, but.
Yeah.
The other thing, too, is with that road structure being built for access, there's potential for future use there, too. When it comes to development, that cost is already, and that feature is already there.
Or future demo.
Yeah, I was going to say, or future demolition, so they don't have to rebuild that road, you know, yeah. This gets after what I was looking for.
Yeah, I think we're at a point where we're as good as we're going to get to maximize what we can. And I'm in favor of the bid, bid alternate approach, just to make sure.
The, the only thought I had is I'm not, I'm not sure about the slab. I, I get your point about, you know, a future use, but the sit, where it's situated, it's a, it's a footprint that would be difficult to sort of rebuild on and then not really have an impact. I'm not sure. I'm just wondering if, would it benefit us to put it in as the alternate number three? Should we not eat up contingency, should things go different, and that also, we don't have to award it.
If you make that your least prioritized option.
At the very end, you could go down through one, go down through two, and then at that moment, say, we've finalized, we do not want to get rid of that, so we're not going to award alternate number three.
Absolutely.
Or if six months from now, as things are progressing, we say, we really have done a little more research, and we do want to get rid of it, and we have the funds, and the bid alternate fits within those funds. We have that mechanism to go ahead and get rid of it. But we're not obligated to do it.
You'd have to make the decision at the time of award, but you're absolutely right. Structuring it in a bid alternate format gives you the option, it gives you a price on it. They're, they're estimating $60,000. We don't actually, we don't know yet.
Right.
Right.
If we don't include it, we'd, we're going to only have about 16,000 left.
Right.
So.
Say that again?
As is.
As is right now.
Like 16 or whatever.
We have like 16 grand.
I thought we had 600. You have, yeah, you have a $600,000.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm sorry. You're right. My math is wrong.
Yeah, it's like 580, 800, or something like that. Give or take.
The, with the bid alternates, we have to take them in order?
You have to take them in order.
Okay, so we can't take one and three, we can take one, two?
Right.
Or one, two, three, or one?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So my question was going to be, because you have sufficient funding for it. If you were committed to either the stack or the, or the boiler room coming down. Do you want to say the stack is absolutely in the base bid as opposed to an alternate?
I did think that. I was gonna say, do we really want that as an alternate? We're not close at two, you know, at, at 304. For the first, for, for 5C and 7AB, all in contingencies, it's 304. Yeah, I mean, I think if you add in.
Both 5D, the, the stack and the boiler room as separate alternates, I just. If we can't do at least one of those, it seems like something's not right. I mean, we have the money, but. And I, and I don't think you'd do them in the other order because you probably don't work around the stack.
No.
To get to the other room, it wouldn't make any sense.
I think it's good to stabilize it.
You don't want to take it down first, so. Do we include that in the base and then just have D as, just the boiler room as the alternate?
Right.
And maybe the slab is alt two.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree.
This is the best plan I've seen in about 10 years.
I concur, Dan.
It's the best plan for us to use and not lose the $600,000 grant.
I was gonna say, it's the best thing I've seen for using, maximizing and using that money instead of turning it back at this point.
I will finance recommend we go with this with your alternates gives you the most flexibility.
And just for clarity, with 5D stack in the base, 5D boiler as an alternate and slab as a second alternate?
Yep, whatever alternate you decide is the way to go.
Oh, I much liked it better when you were recommending it.
I'll second that.
Okay, you'll have to tell the truth.
I was gonna say, is that a motion? And we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstentions? Pass you Dan Missler. What Dan said.
I'll make a motion in capital, make the same recommendation.
Do we have a court? Oh, we do have a capital court.
We do.
We do.
Do we have a second?
I guess I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
So I need to present this to Mass Development. They're aware that we were going.
Right.
But they need to now know that this is how you'd like to proceed and give us the official green light for the funding use. So that will be my first step.
Before we can then engineer a bid package and go out and actually do this, yep.
So I can do that tomorrow morning if you're okay with.
You need our recommendation to do that as discussed.
Correct.
You guys are good with? 5D in the base? The stack, I gotta separate those, the stack in the base, the boiler room is an alternate and the slab is alt two? Is there slab where this is? Where five is, 5D?
5D.
Or is it included in their 5D boiler room?
I will double check whether or not to include the slab. There is, there is a concrete foundation to that, but at this ground level, there's nothing subsurface there. So yeah, I believe it is a concrete slab.
Oh, it, I'm just reading the detail here. It's recommended a portion or all the floor slab associated be removed as the floor section contains deep trenches. Alternate, alternatively, they could be trench, they could be filled or covered. At that point, I just think they should go.
Yeah.
I don't think backfilling, trenched concrete makes sense. If we're gonna do anything, take it out.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll make sure as we're scoping it, that that's included in the abatement and demo is the full slab and all.
Okay.
On 5D. And whatever that means for the stack, if there's a foundation on the stack too, that should be with the stack. Those two should go. Foundations or slabs should go with the demo, it shouldn't be a separate. Like seven AB.
Perfect. Yes?
I was just running the numbers. If you, when you redo the, when you move the 75,000 out of alternate one and move it into. The base bid. It changes your subtotal to 265 on the top and it changes your contingencies through general conditions and engineering on the bottom. By changing those from 28,500 to 39,750 for both of them.
Okay.
So your new base bid. Oh, I think I forgot the.
Estimate probable cost.
Yes.
I think you should be closer to four.
You, you're a little over four. 57,000, 401, 500. Just so people are aware.
Scott, what was your first number?
265, 265,000 on the top. Yeah, the 57,000 stays the same because there's no contingency needed to change for seven A and seven B.
Yeah.
But the 15% is based on the top number. So those changes are 39,750 and 39,750. Adding it all up, you get 401, 500. Just so people are aware. Still leaves close to 200,000 for alternates.
Yeah. And then our 5D boiler room alternate is.
Yeah, that'll change the backlog, you know.
141, I believe, base and then.
It'll lower the contingency if we don't have that, but then we add in the 60 for alternate two and that'll change it again. But it'll still be close, depending on how the bids come in.
Right. Okay, so you get that as our base, alt, and then alt two will be the slabs on seven AB.
Perfect. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we present as discussed to Mass Development for their approval to move forward with. Scoping and putting out a bid package.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ooh, that was short for a lot.
Yeah.
Took us a lot to get there, so.
Yep.
I'll see. Do you expect we'll hear back from them by our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. I probably will have an update.
At least have.
Tomorrow, tomorrow morning.
I believe tomorrow afternoon I'll know.
Do you think they'll look?
I've seen the emails.
Do you think they'll look favorably on this?
Mass Development told us years ago that once, once they're working on a project with us, they're, they're gonna keep supporting us within reason, right? So I think that they are eager to see us make progress on this. I think the delay has been concerning to them and it should be concerning, right? So I think if we have a viable option that really maximizes the dollars that they're providing us on taking structure down. I think they will be favorable to that.
Okay.
They may have a concern that I'm unaware of, so I, I do want to bet that with them. But if, if this is the path forward that really maximizes that money, I don't see why they wouldn't be supportive of that.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And I mean, they've known all along that more than likely demo was the primary direction with the money. So it's not, that we're not building something suddenly.
Correct, right. Okay.
We appreciate their patience.
Absolutely, we very appreciate it.
Please reiterate that. And appreciate Ty and Bond's efforts in kind of revising and revising and revising and. Reanswering our questions, but this is a good.
They're probably so sick of hearing the, the town of Irving calling.
They are happy to keep doing this.
They liked it. What?
They're happy to keep working on this. And we do have some demo companies, I mean, we'll, obviously, when we're ready for a bid package, we'll do the full process. But some demo firms have caught wind that we're working on this and they check in every couple of months. So I know there's interest in that industry to see when this actually goes live as a bid. So that may speak to a healthy competition. We may get good pricing out of it.
Do you think we can have it done by the end of the fiscal year?
I think it's reasonable. The question's going to be the environmental permitting. I don't know how much is, is going to be required at the DEP level. So I think that's the one thing, the bid package won't be hard to put together. If DP or Mass Development gives us the go-ahead, contractual piece, we'll be fine to, to secure all that with the board. It's going to be that environmental permitting piece, how quickly we can get that done. Once that's in place, I think we're good.
Okay. Can you also find out what happens if we do put this out and come in well under? To the balance of funding? Yeah, I mean.
Absolutely.
You know, I'm not saying it will, but we're talking. Almost $200,000 in contingencies in engineering, so if we don't.
Can we make a little progress?
Through all that and there's 100 left or more, can we add something, go after something else?
Right.
Yeah, I mean.
Can we pull off some more while we're there?
If all of the contingency and everything was used up and we added in the other alternative, we'd be over by about 62,000. But they'd have to use up every penny of the contingency of everything.
And we'd have to have a bait.
I don't think we've ever seen that happen.
I'm hoping to get the slabs out.
That's true. All right, I'll eat those words.
But to that point though, I think there's some other add-ons on the facility that, that have proven to be problematic. They provide extra places for people to get access that may be able to be removed as part of this. And, and they're not structures that have substructures or, or would create a void. So there may be some other cleanup work that we can do to the site that just helps further safeguard it from entry.
Brick in every opening and everyone know it.
Right, there may be some opportunity like that.
Right, right.
It might be.
And there's sometimes, I mean, it could actually be a change order depending on what was left and there's a small amount.
I was gonna say, if it's close, maybe it's not alternate two for the slab, but maybe we're repurposing whatever's left for those smaller.
You could do that too.
And leave the slab instead.
Do a separate procurement to take care of those pieces.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Review of the North and Church Street Complete Streets Engineering Proposal.
There's nothing new from that other than the information we had at the last meeting.
So we, we obviously we got it and so it's kind of now, is there any questions, comments? Et cetera. Should we talk about funding at all on this last week or our last meeting?
We'd initially been. Wondering if Chapter 90 would be an appropriate use of this. I think we've, at the same time, then had to deal with North Street, so that's going to.
It says North.
Use a significant portion of that, that available funding. So no, at this exact moment, do we have this for a funding source? I don't believe so. If you want to go forward with this, I would go back to Mass dot, take a look at whether or not we would qualify for a Complete Streets planning grant at this phase. And see if that would be a viable option. And if not, explore what other avenues we can put forward. I mean, this could come through, if you were in support of this, through the normal capital improvement project process as we start to work on the FY '26 budget process. I think it's more important just to circulate this idea and see if this is a path that you want to pursue.
I remember we talked a little bit about the traffic counts and probably wanting to change or increase the number of days or the times of the year.
Right.
Again, those are small percentage points of the total.
Yeah, and the interesting thing is when you look at the precision data. I mean, those dates and days are, first of all, they're already passed.
Right.
Last month. But if you look at above that in the actual memo from Green, they talk about a weekend. They talk about. Taking an accountability for seasonal and, you know, when they're doing their counts. So I think the things we were talking about is, well, you know, a Wednesday is a lot different than a Saturday. But they addressed that in the actual narrative. A little bit further up, not so much the placeholder in that one from precision data. She asked about in theory of whether or not this is something we, we should pursue. My thought is yes. If we're doing the work on, even if it's a placeholder repair of North, but we're doing the work. Route two is getting a revamp. A lot of the structure on North is getting a revamp. The bridges are getting done. It only makes sense to complete this project by looking at the, the really condensed down pinch points, the trouble spots. It makes sense to, to look at it. Whether it's where we can be advantageous and get some grant funding early on to start the process. Or if it just has to go through the normal cycle of going in front of capital and going through that whole process. Either way, I would say yes. Go forward with it in some capacity, you know? I like free money, so if there's grants out there and somebody wants to, you know, a non-matching, just, you know, here's some cash to go do this grant. That would be great.
Is there a timeline attached on roughly what they think the scope, the tasks would take? I didn't notice that in there or?
I didn't see that in there either.
I've looked a couple of times and I haven't seen it.
That's a good point. Let me follow up with them and get that clarity.
Just funny because I swear I asked Brian that last time and he, we had an answer. We found it somewhere.
Oh, we did?
I sw- I, I might be mistaken. I thought we did.
All right, now we're all gonna find it again.
Or I'm just making stuff up.
Well, either way, I think we have a couple. Depending on that, you know, may, may influence one decision or another a little bit, but. Well, as Brian said, one is we put it in, you know, we. It makes sense when we at least submit it, right? And in the 26 capital. Process timeline. Another one is, you know, we, we want to support it and if we can get funding to do it, to do this phase sooner, then maybe what we have. I don't, this depends on the scope of time, what we have for the capital cycle is the result. To actually go and do something rather than figure out what to do, right? So to me, this is, this is the planning phase, like what, what could we even do?
Right.
If we want to be looking at potentially funding what we're going to do or recommend doing. Then that assumes this completes before that, so. I doubt Complete Streets funding would be available for that unless they've got extra and they're accepting interested. Parties overnight, but. I know we're using a bulk of Chapter 90 for North.
Right.
I don't think we have much left at all, like maybe 30 grand.
Okay. I knew it was low.
Per Maple Ave, we set aside 60.
So once we have final numbers, we'll be able to see how much of that 60 we actually have to use.
Okay. So we may not have 50, is what you guys are telling me basically.
Yeah, it would be short. We might have 50, I guess, depending what they come back at, but there's a good chance we don't.
And I'm not saying we don't have plenty of work right now, so I'm not saying, and I don't even know. I mean, I think this is probably a shorter scope time. They need to do some analysis and some public meetings, but I think developing that is probably. Reasonably quick, I mean, assuming they have capacity in their team, right, to do it sooner than later. But what's the reality of that? What are we talking about, when's capital planning?
Submissions is due probably.
If it's like last year, submissions were due in December.
Yeah.
May, December?
Yeah.
Beginning of December. So we've got three months. If we came up with a plan in the next, sometime this month and said move forward.
Do you know off the top of your head when the application window is for the Complete Streets?
I don't. I'm gonna look it up.
I assume there are probably no other grant fundings for this type of project aside from that.
There very well could be. So that's, that's another question mark I have for, for Mass out. There may be another opportunity that we could explore.
And I suppose seeing how this kind of sort of ties into what they're doing for two, they don't want to like, you know, pay 50% or anything, do they?
I think if we, if we propose this through one of the available programs, I'm sure Mass dot will be supportive. I don't know to what level. Even Complete Streets has a max, I think $500,000 right now is their max.
Yeah.
Construction award. I don't know what the recommendation is going to be at the end of this project, but if I had to guess, it's probably going to be at least that, if not a little bit more, so. Oh, yeah. There would still need to be an additional appropriation of some sort, right?
Yeah.
Well, to your point, that may be a friendly ask that, you know, we're looking to do a feasibility study on how our, our project could tie into your project.
Right.
Want to go habsies.
They're already, no, because we.
Yeah, I know.
Talked to them about Green.
We did talk to them about it, yeah. Just a reminder, that our project will dovetail into your project.
Meetings we're having next, this week.
Yeah, this week.
Just one thing.
Yep.
Just one thing.
Do we know for Highway Department where this falls on their schedule of roadwork? Of like what year when they were planning to do this?
North Street?
Yeah. Not the, not the repair we just talked about.
No, I think, and Thomas can speak to this probably better than, than. If I'm incorrect, I think this comes more from citizen concerns about road safety.
Okay.
Testing out the temporary speed pumps or whatever they were called exactly. And very. and various other challenges that we've tried to address over the years.
Okay.
Right.
Rather than a road reconstruction plan.
Okay, so this is outside of any plan the Highway might have had?
Is that fair?
That's it.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just curious though, Brian, for the North Street paving that we approved, what was the do not exceed 420 here?
We have a current estimate of $402,000, so somewhere around there is what, I mean, if it comes down a little bit higher or lower, that's gonna be fine. But we don't have a lot of additional capacity.
Do we know how soon Maple Ave is gonna wrap, and how soon we'll know if we need that?
That's a topic coming up momentarily.
The topic is coming up.
We're gonna need that funding?
This is gonna be a very productive meeting.
Within the next hour. We're gonna have some estimates.
Oh, wait, there's more.
So maybe we should come back to this in an hour and 20 minutes.
Let's not delay that long.
So, the question would be whether or not I need to double check with them to see if, if any planning funds would be accepted under what they call Tier 2. So they're doing two rounds a year right now, which is, which is fantastic, because I believe before it was once a year. But the application period for Tier 2, which is the prioritization plan, which is what we originally did four or five years ago, is it April 1 or September 1? The Tier 3s, which are the construction, the $500,000, that's a May 1 or an October 1. So at this point, we're not gonna make an October 1 application period. We may
It's September 1, right?
No, but we could make the September for the Tier 2.
If the planning falls into that category. If we had to fund planning by ourselves and aim only to apply for construction funding, is what I would
Oh, yeah, yeah, we wouldn't, yeah, no, we wouldn't
That wouldn't be October at all.
I don't even think we'll have a plan until
We may not.
the new calendar year.
But if the goal was FY26, May 1 would be the application period to do it in FY26.
Yeah.
Their review period after the, the applications are submitted, and in theory, when you're going to hear about an award is three months. So if you apply on May 1st, you're not gonna hear until the late summer about whether or not your project's been selected.
Until August, yeah.
So.
Right. But we would have, in theory, applied and brought a recommended project to town meeting.
Correct.
For matching funds.
Right.
Estimating on what that would be by then.
Just in case, yeah.
Yeah.
I think their support, to me, the only path forward I see is as a capital request. Unless something drastic happens with Maple Street, and they don't use the money that's been set aside for that, then I think
And we'll know that in September.
Yeah.
Even if you all grant an extension tonight, the plan is still to have the project completed by the end of August. We'd be closing documents out and final payment apps in September. So we'll, we'll know in short order.
And the bids are back, I'm looking at it here, North are due back September 3, I believe.
Oh, so if, if we did just have it go through the capital process, we'll have a much clearer picture on all of that kind of coming together.
On expanded funds.
And, yeah.
Yep.
We put it through the capital process, yes, but that would be planning to use it in '26, not to do it now. Right, I'm not saying we should have done, but that, that funding is gonna be
That'll be tied up for a little bit.
Right.
But if we, if we follow that process, and I know we, we were talking last year about, how do we try to streamline all of these opportunities as projects arise with the year, responding to whatever the need is, and maybe pursuing grants? If we, if we stick with it, not that capital has to or doesn't have to, they've made decisions about prioritizing something in an amended fiscal year, and that is a recommendation that they then make to the Select Board about bringing that earlier to town meeting or pursuing a grant.
Right.
So if, if capital's willing to accept an early application, doesn't mean we have to review it tomorrow, but we could submit it in short order as a project to consider, put it in the queue, and then as that new information evolves, whether they hold it for FY26, or whether or not they make a recommendation for an amended FY25. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I just don't see it in our current fiscal year where we come up with 50 grand to move forward with it right now, so that's my only concern.
Right.
No, I don't think we come up with that.
I don't see us applying in two weeks to a grant, to a grant, either.
Right.
Yeah, when you say September, it's only a couple of weeks away.
Right.
18 days or something.
Yeah.
Right.
How did that happen?
It's a proven fact, as you age, the, the years go by, there's science behind it, that the years actually go by. And then once you hit a certain age, it actually slows down, there's, it's science.
It slows down, so.
Weird facts that boggle my mind.
So, time to execute the task.
Mm-hmm.
Finding out where this would fall in terms of Complete Streets.
Yep.
Which program. Getting that put together for the capital bank process.
Yep.
And it can always, it can always be submitted, that's the other thing, we probably need to change, I think, if you all agree. There's a timeline for the annual cycle, but if you have things and you have all the data, submit them. Right? I mean, there's no, there's no reason not to submit them earlier, right?
Right.
We have everything in place.
We only frown on later.
We prefer not to find out six months later for the next week.
I think as long as whomever submitting it understands that there's no obligation from the Capital Plan Committee to act sooner, they may choose to, and that's fine.
Right.
But just because you've submitted something three months in advance, doesn't mean that you're gonna get an answer that month.
That's, that would be my concern, is that
Right.
there would have to be a very clear policy in place for department heads to reference that, as Brian said, it's submitted, but we may not look at, look at it till the regular season kicks off.
Right.
Unless it's urgent, of course, unless it's urgent or
Of course, submit urgent as soon as you can. Submit for the coming fiscal year plan as soon as you have it all together, right? It doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can always come back to it if we have all that put together, and we finish up some other projects and we want to revisit it, we can always come back together and talk about it again.
In terms of this proposal, obviously, the timeline, you know, the, the number of weeks or months it would take to do each task, I can get that clarified. Are there any other clarity points that you want in the proposal? Any concerns with this proposal, or is that okay to submit the capital request based on this proposal?
I would say base it on this proposal, if there isn't
Yeah, okay. We can always ask if we need clarifications. Of course. Knowing, I mean, we haven't engaged, there's a question tonight about whether or not we will officially start working with Green on a project. We've been working with them through Mast dot, so we're familiar with their work. But I, I know the level of detail and study they've been doing in Irving Center, so they, they are well-versed in the challenges that we have as it relates to the intersections with North Street, with Church Street, and trying to find either traffic coming and/or pedestrian accommodations that improve the livability of this area. So I do think that they're well poised to be a good partner for you on this project, but it, this is, we're just about to start officially working with them, so there's still a bit of an unknown, right? We haven't had the experience yet.
It was a, a nice surprise to read that proposal and hear the reference to, and the base of knowledge of all the previous work that had been done and how they utilized that work in theirs. And it's not that they were like, well, we're gonna have to redo all this from scratch.
Right.
I said, no, 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 you've got a lot of work, it's gonna be much easier to just tie that in and utilize it.
Exactly. Okay.
And it never has to ask Mast out while you're there, or looking at it, and if there's ways that they can help with it.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you all.
Since we're on it, we might as well jump to it. The sketch regarding Bridge Street and Maple Ave project status.
So there was, for anybody who's familiar with that area or drives by on a regular basis, there was probably a standstill for a while, where it didn't look like a lot was happening. There was a delay encountered with the shoring equipment that we needed to have installed to support the embankment. For anybody who's watching, who's unfamiliar with the area, the rock wall that we're replacing sits adjacent to Route 2, holds up Bridge Street over the wastewater treatment facility. So that excavated area needed to be secured with an appropriate shoring. And so there was a back and forth between the engineers from the manufacturers of the shoring equipment and the engineers working for the town to make sure that they were gonna meet spec, and that process was taking weeks, it just was delaying the, the work, which is really unfortunate. We were able to work through that about two and a half weeks ago, three weeks ago at this point. And in the last three weeks, there's been quite a flurry of activity over there, and if you drive by today, you largely have a completed wall. So, great work's been accomplished, the Highway Department's been onsite managing and overseeing and troubleshooting as problems arise every day. The engineers have come out to inspect and do their work. So we've made significant progress. The challenge is, there was a very specific construction time period, and it ends tomorrow, August 13th is completion date.
We're not right up against that.
We're not gonna be there. Paving is scheduled to occur in the next few weeks, tentatively it was the end of the week, but with the rain that occurred last week and this week, you know, paving contractors are weather-dependent, so there needs to be a little flexibility there. So the contractor has asked for a three-week extension, solely the discretion of the Select Board of whether or not to grant that. There are financial penalties in our contract for not meeting completion date. So there is a penalty there if we, if we don't do that every day until the project's done.
That's an update on where it's at, for those that, that's an update on where it's at for those that weren't familiar, but probably saw a big change in the last two weeks in terms of whether we want to grant an extension. I think, well, thoughts? From the board?
Well, my thought is, if we can be flexible in lieu of penalties, they might make some concessions on the price. Don't have to be so punitive about it, but maybe they can work with us if we work with them.
I think I would just add being more, maybe up, involved in it on a regular basis and kind of the struggles that they've had. While they didn't start as early as we expected, and so that, that obviously doesn't fall to the town to be accommodating of. I think they have worked through a lot of challenges with the shoring, and to date, have not brought any concerns about what that may have cost them and involved in to get to this point, so I, I would lean to being accommodating, because of work, they've been working with us to get here. You know, and, and not punitive of keeping kind of a penalty to it, or holding the, effectively, that's what holding deadline will do, right? It's a punitive deadline, so.
I would, I would also
I generally would agree with you, had it not had the, the middle section of challenges, if it had just been a late start and a request to delay the, the due date, then I would agree.
I was gonna say, given the complications that they ran into, we also have had some really good working relationship with this contractor in the past, and continue to have it on this project, I would lean towards favorable on the extension without the punitive damages.
You know, I'm gonna ask the question.
I know, it's a fair question.
I'm hard on it, but I wanna just put it out there to see, if that's not the temperature in the room, then
I think this is one of the first contracts that we actually have that in there, finally. I say finally only because we've been on the other end of it, where it's just delayed and delayed and delayed, it, no cost except ours, so.
I, I will say, I, I've noticed the significant advancements they've made over the last couple of weeks. I had an oh wow factor driving home tonight, it just caught my eye as I went by, like, and I said something I'm not gonna say on camera, but I, I was remarked at how much visible progress there suddenly was.
Yeah, yeah, very significant, very quick. That was impressive. Yeah, so I mean, I don't take it, I don't say that lightly, because normally I would be more inclined to hold firm, but I think I think because of the, the working relationship and the progress and, you know, the, the effort, where we are, they're looking for three weeks.
Yeah, which puts us at September 3rd and September 2nd as Labor Day. So I don't know if it would make sense if you were open to it just to give them that week, so at least through the Friday to September 6th.
Well, you're just extra generous.
I, again, it's your, your choice.
But, but let me go back to the, the facts. Obviously, tomorrow was the deadline. They expect to be scheduling paving when?
Tentatively, it was scheduled for the end of the week, but again, I think they were waiting to get an update today or tomorrow as to where their paving contractor is with the work that got delayed last week.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm more about, like, they've got a certain amount of work to get the base done, get Bridge Street
Right.
rebuilt. Then scheduling with the paving contractor is kind of, weather's a piece, but then the rest of the scheduling is not necessarily
Right.
our concern, to be blunt.
Right.
So.
From our standpoint, and Thomas can answer more, on the Highway Department side, there's, there's nothing specifically that I'm aware of in the next three, three and a half weeks that a delay will impact our schedules on anything else.
Okay. I think they're only allowed to work on standard weekdays, non-holiday, right?
They cannot work outside of the standard weekdays without your permission.
Okay. So they can't work on a second? Without permission?
Unless you do written, yeah.
I was gonna say, if we're gonna grant a three-week extension, which would have incorporated a holiday that wasn't anticipated, just bump it back to the Wednesday, the 4th. It gives them what would have been the same as if it was three weeks from tomorrow, taking into consideration the holiday.
Did they put forward the, the amount of time, or did they just ask for an extension? Like, did they say, can we get three weeks?
That's how it was relayed to me by the superintendent.
Gotcha. And I would, I would lean to the same, to the 4th.
Is there a chance, though, that they could get it done prior to the 4th? Or is that gonna run them right out to the, the last day again?
That I don't know. My understanding is, all the materials have been readily accessible, so I don't believe there's an equipment issue in terms of getting the, the final material in place. I think it's just a matter of, and their crews can do the work that their crews can do, it's just the subcontractor for, for paving that has to be scheduled around. So unless there's some unforeseen scheduling challenge with the subcontractor, I think everything else is within their capacity.
Subcontractor was already, it was already on their docket, it, everything got bumped back with the weather and delays, but it was already on their to-do list.
Right.
They're not just now reaching out for subcontractors, that was put in place long before, so I don't think it'd be a problem for them to complete that.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, we'd like to see it done before the holiday weekend.
That would be, yeah.
You know, that would be a strong preference for that, obviously, to have it done by the 30th. But
There's always gonna be a little, if you think about this, we're talking about the big stuff.
Paving, not, not, not submittals and everything else, but final everything.
And seeding, there'll be like little things that will have to be done, just a little touch-up work, and, and some of that stuff may be what's happening that final week.
I mean, I'm inclined to be fine with if we're paved and, you know, reopened by the 30th, and they need another week even, or the following week to do the kind of the small stuff, the punch lists, I'm not super concerned about that.
Okay.
Right, I'm more a substantial completion, right, which is paving and the roads reopen. It's been a long time with that closed, and it affects a lot of things.
We're gonna have to have a conversation with the town of Wendell, and, and we can have a conversation about, can we reopen, and are we ready for that? Because while we've been doing our project, they were taking the lead on the bridge and having a conversation about, are we ready to reopen that? So we're gonna have to have that conversation. I'd hate for us to reopen our road and then you still hit a Jersey barrier at the end.
Reopen it for 500 feet?
Right, so we will, we will have to have that conversation
Yeah, that would be unfortunate.
to make sure our neighbors are ready.
I knew they were doing some, yeah, I didn't realize they were actually engaged in it directly, actually working on it right now.
I haven't had a chance to follow up with them in a while, so I just need to understand the status.
Well, that doesn't affect Maple, but it does affect
It does Bridge here.
Yes, I do need a motion, if we're gonna do one.
Yeah, and so I guess what I was gonna ask is, I liked your idea of, you know, substantial completion with paving and road reopening by the 30th. If all they had is the punch list of seeding and lomming and, you know, the, the cleanup work to be done.
Even if they had to re-close it for half a day to go do something?
Yeah, I'd even, at that point, I would say Friday, the 6th wouldn't be out of the realm of feasible to give them that additional four days of the next week, as long as they can be reopened by end of business on the 30th. It's a little more aggressive to get it open than what I was thinking of the 4th, but it also allows them a few extra days for punch list. Prioritize the reopening, the paving and the reopening first. If people are all right with that?
I mean, I'll second that. I think that seems fair, sure.
Is that enough of a motion for you to capture? Betsy, so I make a motion that we grant an extension with substantial completion of the program through August 30th, inclusive of paving and road reopening, with an ultimate deadline of punch list items and program completion on September 6th.
I'll second that. Any concerns from your standpoint, Sean Spotts, since you're here? Okay.
The only thing that I would, substantial is a little bit subjective.
Well, that's why I articulated that it's paving and road opening.
And does it need to be there if it's, you're putting in the other conditions?
Yeah, it's just the two conditions of road reopened and paved.
Yeah. And actually, just, it can be subjective, but in the procurement language, substantial is a very important mile marker for completing a program. So, when you hit substantial, you're like at 95% complete. You are doing punch list, like you just said, and there's certain contractual obligations that happen when you hit that benchmark. So, it actually has a regulatory meaning.
Okay.
Yep.
Without pulling it up, I don't know if it includes paved and opened. Pretty sure it does, but now we've defined it as well.
Now that we've defined it. Someone tells me Scottfield is pretty confident with that.
Any other comments or concerns? Okay, all in favor?
Thank you. I will notify them tomorrow morning.
Okay. So, sometime there by the 6th, we should probably know where we're at financially, or close to. And review and issuance of the special town meeting warrant.
Every time I think we're done with this, somebody gives me more feedback.
Just saying no more feedback, it's simple.
Well, that's why I gave you the memo, because at the end of the day, it's your warrant.
Now he just put it out in the universe, and we're going to make decisions tonight, and then-
Oh, no, it's being approved and done tonight.
Yep.
It needs to be, or we won't hold it on that date.
So, but really, from the looks of it, it just, the big changes just look like we had to separate all the takings articles into their own. So, that's-
Have to is a strong word.
Okay, it was recommended.
Correct.
And then, the work-off program, the state has changed that from 1,500 to 2,000.
Correct.
So, that's about, and everything else looks to be like little grammatical things here and there.
There's a consequential change that Jackie and I were discussing earlier that I need to work through with all of you, but that's a fair summary. And then there's some questions, procedural questions that I put in the memo about standard, I guess, questions or votes that could be taken at the start of every town meeting that hopefully address some of the citizen concerns that came up from the last time meeting. So, I don't know where you all want to start your conversation.
Well, your, the proposed potential standard opening articles is in the memo, right?
Correct.
Which is before the warrant, so let's talk about those.
Okay. I didn't want to rewrite your warrant again if you didn't want to include these?
That's fine. So, has everybody had a chance to read those proposed articles, those first three in the memo? That reading of our articles waived and prior reading under the motion, you know, briefly summarizing, basically, kind of in effect memorializing what is usually done, which is a summary reading and a motion as written.
I asked a question about that.
Yep.
Just, perhaps it's grammatically correct, I don't know, or it says further that unless object is raised, could it be objection is raised?
I think that is supposed to be objection. Good call.
What kind of object can we raise?
These are peaceful meetings, there will be no raising of objects.
Party pooper.
And actually, this is what you already do.
Well, that's what I was saying. In effect, what we have been doing, but it memorializes it in the beginning that we will do this throughout, and we're all in agreement that that is sufficient.
Correct.
The only question I had, I know someone got up and had read about having others speak. You and Donna are not permitted unless authority is granted to speak?
So, again, the way you've been operating it is if the moderator calls upon somebody like myself or Donna to speak, then we have.
Yep.
But technically, apparently, it should be voted on by the body.
Okay.
And she started off, these article suggestions came from council, so she just started with, maybe at least our two positions should be called out, but that could be anything. And I'll go back to your last time meeting where you allowed RDI to just answer questions. So, this could be tailored per town meeting, depending on who you anticipate maybe there as somebody with some expert knowledge that the citizens may call upon to answer a question.
Okay, so you kind of just answered my next question, because I was going to say, should we actually be using names, or should it just be Irving Town Council, Irving Town Administrator, and removing names?
I think positions are sufficient, so we could easily back that up to be positions.
But they are distinctly someone by the meeting, by the time of the meeting. Although I suppose between the warrant and the meeting, there could be a change.
Hopefully not.
Hopefully not.
I guess it's more like a bylaw, you're more apt to use a position in a bylaw, so we're calling out a specific person, and that's-
But these articles would have to be included, they'd be your new articles 1, 2, and 3.
That's how I would envision it.
On every warrant.
On every warrant going forward.
So, you don't have to say leaving the person's name would make sense.
So, well, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say to, if we were to say the positions, town council, town administrator, would it make sense to add relevant subject matter expert to cover the RDI or the?
Yeah. It's meant to be those who you are authorizing to speak that night, so-
It's meant to be very specific.
It's meant to be, I mean, I'm reading, Deerfield has it, and I'm reading minutes from one of theirs, and it's actually moderator motions are not warrants, they're motions before the warrants. So, they are not a warrant, they are their own motions that stand before the warrant articles, which is interesting. I'm just reading that format, I don't know, it's Deerfield math. And there are two moderator motions, and the first one is objective, objection, not objection. And then the second one is, you know, allow the following to address the audience during the meeting, right? Because the only ones who can are the boards at the table, and I believe the only, technically the only people that can be called upon to speak are residents.
Just the idea of it, so the fact that we can call up, I'll use the superintendent, right, would have to be called out.
Right.
And I'm using like the annual because they're not a resident, and we're asking them to speak to the residents.
Like a department head who doesn't live in town.
Correct.
Is it a department head? Oh, yeah, because if they're a resident, they could get up and speak, it doesn't matter if they're speaking as a department head or as a resident.
As a registered voter, yeah.
Okay.
It's very, I think the purpose of it is to be very specific, that it's a non-resident, so you don't have a right to speak and be recognized by the moderator.
Right.
And you're not an elected official who has a right to speak in your elected position. You're an appointed, you're an employee potentially, right? You know, or, you know, if we had a principal, school principal lives out of town, you know, or you are a representative in some way that we want to recognize at some point, council, yourself, employee out of town, you know, school administration, those kind of things. That's what they have here, right? They have chief of police, town admin, union, 38 schools, tech school, council, county, those kind of things.
So, they do by position?
Oh, yeah, name and position.
Name and position.
TA, superintendent, business manager, superintendent. Business manager. Anybody that can anticipate that may need to stand up and get called on. Director of a library and architectural firm, person from, and people from Frank Tech. So, yeah, everyone you'd expect to speak to an article that night who is, you know, non-town official, non-town employee, resident, resident.
And you're saying instead of presenting it as an article, bump the warrant down and introduce them as moderator's motions?
I don't know how it looked in the warrant presented, this is the certified.
Okay.
So, you know, it is moderator's motions, and then it's the, and then it carried, and then this one, and it carried, and then it said recognition and Article 1.
So, the order's a little different, these things happen separate from the warrant articles and ahead of.
It makes sense that it would happen ahead because if it's, your first article is-
Business.
Business, yeah.
But it would have to happen, I'm trying to think of how the moderator calls to order goes through the official certification of the meeting opening. So, it would have to happen after those things have been completed, but then before you hit Article 1.
Yeah.
Okay.
Makes sense, I mean, to me, that makes sense. They just have their housekeeping articles.
They are.
That's what this is.
I mean-
It solidifies what we already do.
The moderator convenes the meeting.
Right.
That's really the first action.
Fair.
It's not an article, but he convenes it.
Fair.
And that's when, then he made motions and then talked about warrant articles.
Sure. Okay.
How that looks exactly, I don't know in a pretty format, but-
No, I can make those changes.
I personally think if we're going to add them, I think it makes sense to put them ahead of the warrants and not have an article, have it as his motions.
We'll do it under the heading of moderator's motions.
Yes.
That makes sense.
Good.
So, back to it, there was the first one, which is what we do, sounded like everybody was in favor of that.
Yep.
Objectively. And then, listing those who can address the audience during the meeting, any for, against concerns?
No concerns, I think just looking at, obviously, each warrant gets looked at individually, and you retailer that motion accordingly, so.
Do we want to carry a standing list of people that we would always, such as town administrator, council, superintendent, principal, kind of like department heads that are non-
A blanket.
That are non-residents, as a standing list?
It keeps it simple, you don't have to think about it, and then there's an add-on that's-
Right, and then if RDI, for example, we had, you know, a person, then-
No, I like, I like how Jim had said it with the, and, subject matter, matter expert. I mean, do we have to call them out that if it's, because if, I mean, if you have, I'm just thinking, if you have, let's say we had a night for whatever reason, RDI was here, Ty and Bond was here, whomever was here, I mean, that list could grow exponentially.
That was asking people on Deerfield list.
I just thought-
But it's clear who is going to be allowed to speak and who isn't.
But they get up and, yes, I understand that, I also think they get up and introduce themselves, and I think it's more for our residents to read, and it's just, I don't know, it's that, having to name every single person, what happens if something happens and we're expecting Ty and Bond and Joe Smith can't come, and so they're sending somebody else instead? Now, can that person not speak on their behalf because they're not on this hypothetical list?
No, I think if you call out representative from Ty and Bond, but as opposed to just a general blanket of subject matter, you know, I disagree with the subject matter specialist because that's just a blanket for anybody who says, I'm a specialist in that matter, and I happen to be here at your meeting, I would like to be heard. You haven't named, you know, what agency do you work for?
Right.
What are your qualifications? We know that Ty and Bond's going to be there, we know that RDI's going to be there. Maybe the name is omitted from those categories because we don't know who they're going to send in theory, but a representative from enlisting out those agencies.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe the moderator has some guidelines on that, and in fact, maybe part of the reason we have non-residents set off the side, they're not part of the general body. So, when any one of them is called on to speak, the moderator, it may take a motion a second, but it may be the moderator asks, is there any objection? Because without objection, the non-resident can be allowed to speak. But the moderator has rules on that, I believe. I don't know if it's Robert's rules or it's moderator procedures. For the town council and the administrative person here, that's pretty clear-cut. The other things, I believe that the body has a right to vote or object to any non-resident speaking.
Even those.
Yeah, so-
Even those first two, you just mentioned, technically.
By putting these in here, it's not granting anything, it's giving the body the ability to say yes or no.
Right.
So, whether or not we list them out here or it's done ad hoc every time that you want to, it's trying to eliminate the, this person wants to be heard, so now we have to make that motion again to allow them, take a vote on whether or not they can be heard, approve them to be heard, and then let them get to the mic. This is just putting everybody up there first so that the moderator can just go through and be like-
That's the goal.
This person has already been approved to be heard, so come on up to the mic. Streamline it a little bit. I'm looking at another Massachusetts towns, and this is what they actually adopted, but it was a resolution of rules of procedure for the moderator and for their town meetings last year, and rather than a listing, they said a non-voter may request the privilege of addressing the meeting on a motion made under any article or resolution offered, request to be granted by the moderator unless there is a objection by a voter. Upon an objection, the moderator shall pull the meeting by voice or count at discretion, and a majority vote in favor shall entitle the non-voter to speak, basically, effectively to address the meeting. Moderator may grant the privilege of the floor to any non-resident town department head without necessity of a vote. It kind of gives that call-out for department heads, which the moderator has discretion to grant the department head the floor to speak.
And they're calling that a resolution?
They had adopted these, this was a, this was a resolve the town vote to adopt the following rules of procedure of town meetings in Chatham, and this was, there was like A through G, there was a bunch of them, that was just one of them.
I wonder if that amends their bylaws, because the other option, and I know that that was a comment that was made, we don't have, other than the posting of your warrants and when town meeting is called, you don't have like a robust bylaw section that addresses how town meeting is administered. We just have the need-to pieces are in there. So, that may be something that you could also consider, there is a blanket vote that is done as a bylaw amendment that governs how town meeting is to be administered.
You are right, it is, because it's rules of procedure, so it's an adoption, and at the bottom, it says foregoing rules are not intended to alter or change traditional conduct of the town meeting, except as specifically stated. So, they must have additional.
Brian, on the last one, I know typically if, well, here's my question, should that be specific to a two-thirds voice vote because there are other fractional votes that we take and are counted?
I thought that was an interesting question, too.
We do a nine-tenths, right?
Yeah, because that's on, the nine-tenths is on board today.
Like a bill of a prior year, it's a nine-tenths, right. They're not as common as the two-thirds, but I thought it was interesting that council only recommended this one.
And then, if a vote was close, I know typically the moderator and the town clerk do get up and count, so this is basically saying they would not have to do that any longer? He could just declare it?
If he declared, I believe, right? This is if he declared the two-thirds, then they would not have to count. So, basically, it's, this would give the moderator the discretion to call it and say the two-thirds was yea or nay without the count.
So-
Is what I read.
I, personally, I don't agree with this particular one. I have sat through meetings where people have been very, very loud and intentionally projected, and I know the moderator does his very best, but I think if you're not counting, I think it would be very hard to 100, you know, conclusively say that, you know, it was 52 to 49, kind of a thing.
I think we're doing this, though, I think we've done this. We have heard dissenting and favorable votes, and the, I'm assuming the body didn't feel it was unclear, and the moderator said it was a clear two-thirds majority and called it, and we've accepted it.
And there's also been numerous times where he's gotten up and counted. And I know with the new software, it will hopefully negate this kind of thing.
Right, right.
I just-
All I meant to say is that we have, I think we've done this and allowed this to be accepted. I wouldn't, I agree with you, I wouldn't want to put it in writing, that is just, that is the decision.
And under Robert's rules, anyone who's been recognized can challenge the ruling of the moderator, and they have a right to ask for, they call it division of the House. They have to have, ask the right to do that. Whether the House votes to do that or not, everybody may say, no, we're not going to, but anyone has a right to do that, challenge that ruling on a voice vote. So, I don't believe this changes that right. I don't think you can change that right, unless we decide not to have Robert- Unless we decide not to have Roberts' rules run the meeting.
Well, I think maybe to what Brian, Brian said before, we don't necessarily have a set of rules that we've adopted that we say we follow for sure, which I think. Anyway, this one I'm not in favor of. The third one. I don't know where others are.
I don't think it's necessary.
I'm hoping we're going to count it everything and it's, it's a moot point.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna say. If our other ones that are on the warrant actually pass, we won't need this anyways. Everything will be accounted vote.
Although that should be part of probably what we put in place of how the meeting is held, that all votes do go through that.
Yeah.
Unless, right? And so we probably do want to work on that, I think, for a future meeting. It's clear rules on what are, or bylaw or, or procedure for our special account meetings.
It was like the stepping stone to do that, I think.
Right. Instead of doing them every meeting, I'd rather have them clear.
Makes sense.
The second one. I mean, I heard a lot. I'm inclined to think, let's maybe step back and not do it this time, but. Think about what would we incorporate and how and look at some other examples, just in the, like, I liked the one from the other town personally where it was a little more clear. It was just defining clarity around how it happened. It didn't take away or add that it could or couldn't. Was clarity that department heads couldn't.
I would agree with you, except that it's, we've already had residents call out that fact at a town meeting. And so I, I do think there are some residents who are aware of what the procedures are and I would hate to see us needing to have someone speak that is unable to.
Well, they'd be able to. We would just have, the moderator would have to go through, if there's a dissenting vote that says they can't speak, they're not a resident, the voter, he can make a motion to the full body. That would allow that person and if it's a majority vote and it passes, although there's a dissenting vote, it's still approved because the moderator made a motion. And the, the body approved it by a majority vote. It just means that those steps would have to happen each time. You can't just say, I'm allowing them to speak because it was only one person that said no. You would have to go through the steps of the motion, the vote. The notification that it passed and then allowing them to use the mic. So they're still allowed.
And, and this, and this would just basically take that step ahead of time for all people listed.
Correct.
To say, please approve them now.
So we don't have to do this every time.
Without having to address if someone dissented.
Correct. And my only concern would be is if we don't have something and let's say something is contentious and they don't want the expert to speak. If it's not in a list somewhere that they've agreed to ahead of time, I mean, I guess it's a moot point. I'm just afraid that if we wanted someone to speak, that the, they could get voted down if it's not.
And this could too. That's where I would rather define a very clear set of rules that we adopt once and they stay. Because then it's done one time and it's in place. Like department heads and council just do.
Yeah.
And others can or will be voted on by, you know, if, if there's an objection or something like that, whatever that definition is, but something that's a little, that is a little more formal, a little more.
Yep.
Kind of established.
And you're proposing to hold off and wait until either another STM, if that comes up before our annual or at the annual?
Yeah, probably at the annual if we're gonna define meeting regs, I would think. We'd want to do it there. But yes, I'm proposing that this is only for the night anyway, so it effectively, we do it in the beginning or we do it by objection.
Right.
It'd be the same thing, but instead establish a set of rules that includes some people who we define get to speak if necessary.
And in all honesty.
Within, within the allowance of.
In all honesty, the moderator, if he has the decision that, or wants to do that on his own, he can make any motion he wants before we get into the articles because it is his meeting.
His meeting. This is true.
So if he feels more comfortable making a motion that he wants to, you know, get this out of the way, the moderator has that control of his meeting, how he runs it before he gets into our, any of the articles. The way the articles are written is ours, but the running of the meeting is his.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. I'd like to see how this is presented. We should take a look at how this is presented before we print it. If we have, I know that's tomorrow, but if we have time, uh, because these are his to make, so, well, if they have to be printed. Because he does have the discretion to make them or not.
Or not.
So. I mean, you could list them as proposed procedural.
Yep.
Motions.
Right.
I don't want to keep us here all night on, on my account, but I do have a question. It was something that Deb said. We, we may have been to a bunch of hearings and meetings and talked through a whole bunch of things and we believe these experts, whoever they may be, on any subject ought to be heard. But the people who are there may not. They may disagree. Say, we don't want to hear this. Our mind is made up. May not be the most wise decision, but it's their decision. So just wanted to keep that in mind. And I had one other question. This final thing here under the town council article. Does this sort of go contrary to what the citizens petition is asking that later on? That, that the citizens petition is asking that if somebody calls for a division of the House, then moderators be required under Mass General Law to have a vote?
Yeah, we've already said, nobody likes the last one.
Yeah, I'm not just.
Good. Thank you.
Unless there's someone that dissents here, we aren't gonna carry the third one.
Okay. You got my vote. Thank you.
And, and my proposal is that we hold off on the second one and potentially come up with clearer guidelines for meetings rather than, adopt those rather than. Have that as an article each time or a motion each time.
Okay.
And just incorporate the first one for now.
Sure.
Sure.
Incorporate the first one as a suggested motion. Guess in terms of formatting, could it fit right at the bottom of the table of contents page? Where there's only the one?
I think it needs to come after the warrant, after it's called to order.
Oh, you're saying after the Commonwealth Massachusetts Frances?
So I think it, I think it would be before we get to the warrant articles.
Okay. What if you moved that?
I like that.
To under the table of contents? And then put that there.
Move the Commonwealth through, um.
Yep.
In the warrant. Up to the bottom after the table of contents?
Yep.
Okay.
And then if you can't just fit in there, you know, either proposed or moderator motion.
Got it.
And then I'm gonna kind of jump ahead a little bit. I believe last time the finance committee recommended the takings article.
Yes.
And so gentlemen, do you have any problems with recommending them as individual as, there's nothing changed in them except they were pulled out to be individual articles?
Okay, fine.
That was the sole purpose. We wanted to wait.
There were other things in there.
Yeah, there was other things. That was, that was one of them saying.
So the only thing I just want to make you all aware of, that you all weren't here for the last conversation, there was. A discrepancy on the, on the right-of-way plans on the north side of the. I don't say the Key up Bridge. It's not the Key up Bridge. It's the Turch Street Bridge on Key up. Where it looked like there was a parcel between two housing lots or two parcels that is the shape of a Key up brook. And, and that's, it's not a true parcel. It was the shape of a brook. It has just been on the assessing map since the seventies, I think. It's just a discrepancy that has just been pushed along for years. And Jackie did a review of the deeds. And the, the references to the boundary lines are kind of vague. Some say to the brook, some say in the brook, some say to a point by the brook, along the brook. But there is one that is very clear that says middle of the brook and state law on boundary lines between two parcels with a waterway that shared. Unless it describes a, a boundary marker, it's the middle of the, the waterway. So we're having that fixed. I don't know what that means for the assessing maps, but we're having that part fixed. So there was something referred to as temporary easement four, one, uh, temporary easement five, and they were for the town. And those are going to be split fifty-fifty approximately to the two landowners. So that may just have to be adjusted, that square footage, just a little bit. The only other thing I've become aware of, um, on our right-of-way plans. Flag Hill is not well defined on the current plans. And so they have sent the surveyor back out, they were out there last week, just to verify all the points on Flag Hill. And to make sure that there's not a utility easement that's needed just for that corner lot on Flag Hill. If it turns out that that needs to happen, it would just be amending the article for Odin Enterprises. It's the same property. It's, there's no change there. So that was the only. By doing it this way and breaking into these six articles, everything's so specific that you may have to make a small amendment for these things. Which is inconvenient and it may have to happen on town meeting floor, which is not the way we like to do things. The other format, which was acceptable to Mass Dot, but council does not prefer, so a little more generalized. And so the final plans that we're bringing forward that may be amended. Could be discussed on town meeting floor and it wouldn't have changed the article. So. There, it's the same information, but this is much more restrictive, which is the purpose. That is why council is presenting it the way, way she is.
It's also more precise and it allows for individual easements to be approved, even if not all easements get approved.
That is also correct.
There's pros and cons. There's also some, just a typo or two, I believe, in the first one. Page three of the warrant, top of the second col- um. Fourth line down on the second column, thence north twenty-four degrees, six minutes, twenty-nine. Seconds west between six minutes, twenty-nine is a space. Top of page three. Fourth row down, fourth line down, thence twenty-four, north twenty-four degrees, six minute, twenty-nine second.
Yep.
There's, uh, space between six twenty-nine.
Got it.
And then from the bottom up in the same column, the last thence, uh, it's the fourth, thirty, yeah, it's thirty-six inches, not thirty-six colon. It's thirty-six seconds, not thirty-six colon west.
Got it.
Got it?
Yep.
Since we're on those, those ones.
Right. I'm looking at papers, so I don't have page numbers. So I'm in Article Four.
Article Four. It is the.
It's the, oh my gosh.
Third thence down?
Four, five, six, seventh thence down. You have a double space before and after continuing. And then the same thing happens to you on the next line with discontinuing. That looks like the spacing of that first sentence just got a little wonky. I'm sorry for being so nitpicky.
That's okay.
Did you say continuing and discontinuing? I don't see those.
I don't see those at all.
You're in Article Four?
Continuing, yep. The seventh thence down before and after the word continuing. It looks like it is double spaced.
I don't see a continuing. I'm just not following. Hold on then. So you said seventh thence?
Oh, no, wait. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. I'm sorry, twelve thence.
Oh, the one that has the west, the, the thirty-six colon west. Okay.
I missed the first five thence.
Wow.
That is a lot of thence.
Proceeding discontinuing the twenty-twenty-two layout.
Got it.
The last thence.
The last thence.
Oh, yeah, that would have been a lot easier.
The colon mistake in it. The minutes, the colon. Yeah, okay. Got it. Wow. There's probably another space to the A as well, but I'm not positive. That's hard to tell in this copy. Here's the other thing. This is a font that fills the column.
I was about to say something.
Spans and it's not actually spaces.
Correct.
Oh, you're right. Now that you say that, I'm noticing it in a couple of different.
Yeah.
That same thing in a couple of different spots, so.
So it may or may not be spacing.
It's probably not.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't like fonts at either.
And then Article One is new, correct? The one for four hundred seventy-three dollars and fourteen cents?
That is new.
Okay.
That's a bill of a prior year.
Okay.
So I don't know, finance wants to make a recommendation on that or not?
Pausing for a moment to see if anyone.
Yep.
Do we want to recommend or not recommend Article One?
Yes, recommend. Well, you asked.
Was that a motion? Okay, motion in a second. All in favor? Any no's? Any abstentions?
Nope.
We'll, we'll.
Three oh, no.
We can wait.
Article, yeah, if you want to come back to it one day and returns, that's fine.
We're good.
Articles three, so we need to make some decisions to finalize this one.
Yep.
So it's the fifteen-hundred. Do we go to two thousand? That's number one. Two oh one one one. I think we're leaning. I think we were leaning in that direction last time.
Yeah, the only, the only question I have is if you do it at two thousand, are you still using the state standard of fifteen dollars per hour or are you bumping it up? Are you changing the number of hours that the person puts in or the rate in which they're getting paid? Because right now it's fifteen dollars an hour for a hundred hour, up to a hundred hours to get up to the fifteen-hundred. So that is called out. So if you're doing two thousand and you break it down.
The math to work, huh?
It's a hundred and thirty-three hours, a hundred and thirty-three point three-three hours. In order to get fifteen dollars an hour to divide into that.
Correct.
Or are we changing the rate and paying them a, a higher rate so that they can get a higher return on their hourly work?
It's in the policy, in the bylaws, is it?
Well.
No, just keeping that in mind that if you're changing the two thousand, that we have to then.
I got you.
We have to grapple with that on the backend of it. It's not in the.
It's not in here.
It's not in here, but it's something we'll have to rectify when we move forward.
All that the statute says in regard to that and then what our bylaw proposes is minimum wage. So as that gets adjusted. That would then change from, if you went to two thousand, right now it'd be a hundred and thirty-three point three, but it could evolve if minimum wage was.
Every year it may change too, so.
Right.
I necessarily wouldn't tailor it to the amount and the hours, to the dollars.
That is allowed is the minimum wage.
Correct.
We're not allowed to go above that.
That's correct.
Okay, so then that question is answered. It's defined.
The statute says minimum wage, right?
Okay, okay. Then that answers the question.
We just calculate.
Instead of a hundred hours, it's a hundred and thirty-three point three-three.
Correct.
Okay. And the minimum wage is defined in here. It's just not the number of hours.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
That's in one for one?
One point four, yep.
And again, finance committee, we recommended it last time. Now that we've adjusted it to two thousand dollars, would we like that recommendation, recommendation to remain or?
There's a few changes we're in here. A few running on a second.
Okay.
So one is the two thousand, which needs to be updated in one three-three and one, one-one. So we're doing two thousand, right? That's our proposed. That's what I heard.
Yes.
Then there is. The grammatical in one-two, the. Liability in one-three-three needs to be changed, right? Not to exceed ninety percent of the annual tax liability for the property.
Where's that? One point?
One-three-three, the highlighted section, if you have the red line. If you don't, it's where the fifteen hundred dollars is.
Yeah, it's not that it's not to exceed.
Not to exceed ninety percent of the annual tax liability and not to exceed two thousand per taxpayer, right? That's the amended.
Whichever comes first.
Unless any other abatements.
Ninety percent. Does that capture your concern? Sorry.
If it doesn't, come up, please.
I wanted to make sure I understood correctly.
I did want to go for the back.
No, no, thank you. If, if your answer wasn't yes, come on up.
So you are obligated under Mass General Law to pay ten percent of your tax bill. There's a few exemptions where the full tax bill is abated, but those are only in the veterans clause and they're very specific on what it is. So the ninety percent is fine, but I don't know if you want to add to it as per Mass General Law, chapter, I don't know what it is off the top of my head, that states that. The taxpayer must pay ten percent of their tax bill. Just to be clear, where you came up with the ninety percent, it's because it's the law. It's not a, a number that can be changed in the future.
I'm assuming it's all part of fifty-nine, five K though, because that's where the abatement lives, right?
It's in chapter fifty-nine. I just don't, I don't particularly remember the section that ten percent of the tax bill.
Do you want to reference that chapter?
That is up to you guys. Do you want to reference the chapter or no? I do think we should probably say less than any other applicable abatements. Maybe it's not to exceed ninety percent of annual tax liability for the property unless otherwise allowed by Mass General Law. Because if there's a veterans clause that lets you go above ninety, that would need to be.
Well, the veterans, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be doing the work off program because your, your tax bill is, is zero.
It wouldn't be in addition. It's, it stands alone. Okay, nevermind then. Got it.
Well, I did have a question when reviewing it and one of the questions. Well, I did have a question when reviewing it, and one of the questions that I had is, say the person worked their allowable hours to 2,000 and their tax bill was less than that, and then, you know, they have the 10% liability that they have to pay, they're obligated. What would you be doing with that? Or do you, is there a provision in that says you can only work up to?
Yeah, you cannot, you cannot credit in excess of 90% of, that's this sentence that we're talking about.
So whoever's keeping track of their time should let them know that they've reached their threshold.
So when they come through the application process through my office and they get approved through, on being vetted by your office, there will be a cap set as the number of hours that they can work for whatever department they're going to work for. And once they hit that cap, that's when they get certified service back to our office.
Whether that's $2,000 or their tax liability is less. Whatever that is.
Whatever, yeah, whatever they hit first.
Is, is my understanding correct that the Finance Committee just votes to recommend that the Select Board participate in this program? And then the particulars of how you do it is up to you. But because there are changes, our move, we recommend that you approve this program as, as the new law requires.
The recommendation is the recommendation, if it was, is for the program criteria as defined in the article in total.
Correct. We already did that, but there have been some changes because of the state.
Correct, we're making some changes to it right now from what you saw last, yup.
Right, so we still recommend. Would you need another motion to do that, or just we're good as we hear?
As long as, if we all, once they have made all their changes, if we all agree that we still recommend it, I don't feel that we need to take another motion. If we don't want to recommend it, then I would ask for one.
Okay, thank you.
So are we, are we referring to MGL on the 90% or no?
I'm still trying to find the chap.
Yeah, I was looking it up, it's, you know, there's parts embedded in 59, parts embedded in, I think, 152, there's different if somebody wanted to challenge it, we can look it up as, and find it. If somebody's able to pull it up, so we can actually get it tonight.
While you're doing that, can I ask Jackie to explain one more concern she raised? Is that okay?
Yes. While he's busy doing that, I'll say yes.
But did you have something?
I just wanted to say, after that, if it's literally coming down to we're sitting here waiting for people to look up MGL, can we move on?
That's why I just want to ask this one question. So there was a revision that counsel asked us to consider, the board weighed on the last meeting, and that was whether or not, if we have 10 available positions for this program, and say only eight are applied for, and another person living in the same house, a spouse, somebody who owns the property also wanted to apply, so there would be two property owners on the same property, could they participate? So the board was willing to consider that and put in a provision. I want to say it's in 1.45? Where we said only one tax abatement per property per fiscal year shall be allowed unless the number of applicants is less than eligible slots. That's how we address that. And Jackie just raised a concern, I just wanted to make sure everybody heard before we proceeded with that language.
So under Mass General Law, of course I'm drawing you blank because it's late and I'm tired, that deals with exemptions, that you're only allowed one exemption. So I just want to be clear that you're not muddying the waters a little if you allow two work-off abatements, which are different than exemptions, because it's work, it's an abatement versus, although it does come under, off of the overlay. And I do want to clarify that there is one exception, veterans again are the only, you can qualify for a veteran's exemption if you have a disability or there's some, also some service medals that qualify, and then your spouse could qualify for another exemption. But that's the only that's the only one where you could get two. So I'm just concerned if you do two work-off abatements, people are going to wonder why they can't apply for two exemptions because in their mind, they're going to think it's the same, if not, or very similar to the program. Also, you would be saying it would be a $4,000 cumulative, if they both worked, their 2,000, and the average tax bill in Irving for fiscal year 24 was $2,400. So then that brought up my previous concern.
So it would be 90% of the 2,400 is what they could do, and that would be his office putting a cap on each individual for 50% of that.
Which is fine, it just was a concern
Either way, it's going to be 90% of the
Right, we said not to exceed.
Not to, yeah, can't.
And just to be, and maybe somewhere in the application, we could be clear that this is the only program, the abatement program, that would allow the spouses to both apply for it at the same time.
For the two property owners.
For the two, yeah, for the single property, yeah.
I mean, this does only apply to this one, so I think that's clear, right? We're not, the eligibility for this program is for this program only.
Yeah, because it's an abatement program and not an exemption program. I just wanted it to be clear that under the law, exemptions, you're only allowed to do one. And
Does that capture all the feedback?
I think so, I mean, that was it, I read it today, so I just, I mean, this is a very different program. I mean, the assessor's office is involved, but only in certain aspects of it. We would process the, the abatement and verify the income part. That's what the assessor's office is tasked with under, under this program.
Did that change anything about the language we have in there for other of you? For the two people, single household? I think we're good as it was written.
Yeah, so Brian, so you're putting not to exceed 90% of the tax liability for the property and not to exceed $2,000 per taxpayer in that paragraph on page two, right-hand side, where our edit is?
Section 1.33.
In 1.33.
It reads in the amount, not to exceed 90% of the annual tax liability for the property and not to exceed 2,000 per taxpayer, unless any other applicable abatements.
Okay. I just wanted to hear it one more time to make sure that was the language that was captured.
I'm glad you let me double check. And I've caught 2,000 and 1.33. I caught 2,000 and 1.43. And I got 2,000. There was one more place.
Article information in 1.1? Is it 1.1? Yeah, it's 1.1.
That has been changed.
I'm not finding the MGL off the top of my head. I'm not super concerned personally about adding it in there, so we'll leave it be unless unless we come across it tonight and then we'll add it in. If we do, and if not, we'll get it in the future.
When we finish the policy, we could add it in there if it becomes relevant.
Okay, done.
Okay, so based on the changes that were made this evening, do you all still want to recommend this article? All right, then the Finance Committee's recommendation will stand.
I will add that back in.
You recommended the first one, there were no changes, second recommended the third, or re-recommended the third, recommended the breakout easements.
I don't think any of us are going to have complaints about the typos or anything like that getting fixed.
I think we give, we give Brian the creative license to fix grammar.
Capital, I know, finance is fine with the easements, capital is also fine with the easements, I'm assuming? Okay, so I'll put approval in back for both, all of those.
Yes. The last thing was just given under our hands today, not 12 days ago.
We can fix it.
If you want us to sign it tonight.
You would also ask me to add the word electronic in to the capital article. I put it in the article information. I don't know if that is where you wanted it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that was, that was my purpose, yes. So, yeah, that's good enough for me.
Okay.
Any other changes, questions, concerns about the STM warrant?
Say, let's do it and see what we get for feedback.
Approve the special town meeting warrant for August
28th?
Yes, I'm just pulling back, for August 28th, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you all, I will get that finalized for your signature.
Anything else for the joint meeting?
I don't see it.
Motion to adjourn the joint meeting and put Select Board to regular session?
Continue session, yeah. Second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all, we'll see you on the 28th then. Seven o'clock.
Do you all want a joint meeting beforehand or tentatively?
Set it up, or if we don't need
We'll put a 6 o'clock, we'll put a 6 PM on if we need it, we'll hold it, if not, we'll
Okay, let's all plan it then.
We'll put it down for joint at 6 for all three, and then we can skip some or all there.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I, okay. Or if you want to leave it on the desk? Perfect, thank you.
Okay, back to the top? Meeting minutes. January 3rd, 22, January 10th, 22, July 8th, 24, August 1st, 24.
You want to do them individually, you want to do them all? I didn't have concerns with any of them.
I'm going to recommend we do them individually.
Two and two, or? Okay, I was going to say either two and two or all individually.
I mean, we can, we can split them two and two, or just
Oh, you want to keep, you want to stay out of the 22s?
I'm going to abstain from those because I don't recall being present.
You were not.
You were not. I don't believe you were present in any capacity.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 3rd, 2022, and January 10th, 2022, as written.
I will second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions?
Aye, abstain.
Thank you. And make a motion to approve meeting minutes from July 8th, 2024, and August 1st, 2024, as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Review of the federal fiscal year 21, CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program, quarter ending June 30, 2024, report. Any questions or concerns?
None.
Review of Professional Engineering Services Agreement for Blue Heron-Greenway Feasibility Project with Green International.
Verified with the consultant, the prices are still good. They are still interested in the work and they are ready to proceed if you all are ready.
And so the only caveat is the in, the in-kind work is not in here, but we're just sourcing that differently. As far as they know, it's still in-kind work, it's part of, you know
Our in-kind is just we're having a third party to our, ours.
Correct, so.
A different third party to our in-kind, right?
So, yeah, I read through it, I didn't have any concern.
Okay.
I'm with it.
Any concerns?
I have no concerns, no.
I'll make a motion to engage Green International Affiliates Incorporated for Professional Engineering Services to conduct a feasibility study for the proposed Blue Heron-Greenway Shared Use Path Project in the amount of $33,783.31, and to authorize Brian Smith, Town Administrator, to execute all necessary agreements.
Who will second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Review of the licensed site professional services proposal for tie and bond for the Maple Avenue landfill.
So unfortunately, this was received right before your last meeting, and we haven't met for the last three weeks, so I asked them in the meantime, it didn't make sense to present this without having an understanding of the annual monitoring that needs to happen, so that's your next proposal. So this is specifically related to that June action report that we submitted to DEP about next steps. Though we never heard back from DEP, I'm told that's normal, that no response means it was accepted, or we should interpret that as it was accepted? So
No news is good news?
I think that sounds extremely unsatisfactory, but apparently that's how this works. So these tasks are, are based off that action plan that we submitted back in June. This cost, of course, was not planned for. We couldn't have known about this to put this into the budget. So this would have to be billed to the landfills budget, but I do know that you can't do this and the monitoring exercise that you need to do in the next motion with the existing appropriations. So we will have to consider either a budget amendment later in the year, or we would have to consider a reserve fund transfer. Though the work is required, so we
We don't have an option to not do it.
Correct, in fact, there is a submission due tomorrow, so
I do have a question. And they've been progressing all along because we've had to react.
And they have been, though I told them if they had to go to DEP and tells them that we needed an extension to do that, in the meantime, they just proactively started to prepare all the materials, so so the work has been prepared for you.
The only question I came up with is, in reviewing the documentation from Tie and Bond, page three talks about project costs. Says it will not exceed the fee of $21,400. And at the end of that project cost, it says the total amount is $25,900. So I'd like to hold them to the $21,400?
Understood.
Yeah.
I agree with you, except it does say not inclusive of subcontracted, right? Or is that just? No, never mind, that's just a markup, cost plus. Nope, you're right, I was misreading that, that's just a cost plus reference to subs.
Yeah.
That's not a, that's not an exclusion.
They just put a typo in there, and they put a placeholder for the wrong amount, didn't catch it before they gave it to us. If it wasn't quarter after nine, I would say, could we get, you know, Pete on the line and ask him, ask him which one he wants to hold himself to.
On vacation?
Other Pete, Valinsky?
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Like from Tie and Bond.
I'm sure Pete will go 21,4.
Yeah.
I assume, you're, you're correct, it's a typo, I do assume the table is what they updated.
Yeah.
But it's fair, it's their, their mistake.
So here's where yes and yes. I'm guessing, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but there's a $3,500 per fee up in the top. Is that inclusive of one? POET, system installation? No, it says it does not include.
Correct. They were just giving that as informational use only. And even that would only bring it to 24,9.
So 21, 24, oh, you're right. I missed, I missed 1,000, you're right, I missed 1,000.
It's just a typo, I mean, they obviously put the 21,4, and I, you're right, I would imagine that they updated a proposal imagine that they updated a proposal and updated the table and didn't realize they embedded that cost in their narrative.
Right.
Which they don't normally do.
Right.
So, I'm sure they missed that, and, you know.
I'm glad you all brought up the proposal for an install. So, they did call me today to, to want to further explain that, they assumed there may be questions. You're under no obligation to do that, the provision of bottled water is sufficient.
Because we're under the 20, whatever it is, yeah.
Now, if through the sampling process, we identify another location, we may have to expand that service. But it is, it is an ongoing thing that we have to manage on a regular basis, so there's, it's not that it's onerous, but there's a ongoing expectation that the town is working with the property owners to make sure that there is sufficient water provided. And we've been waiting to get through this next step to understand the scope of how big that is and whether or not we have to put in a more permanent solution for that. This proposal talks about and contemplates whether you all and/or the private, private property owner would be accepting of the installation of a filtration system.
Yeah.
If you do that, there's still an ongoing, there's the install cost, there's at least the initial quarterly testing, if the quarterly testing proves to be fine, that turns into an annual testing.
You can bump it out to annual.
So, it's a, it's an ongoing maintenance item, but it would be worked into the landfills budget as an ongoing item?
Right. So, I read through their proposal, and I know they want to, they don't want to make any recommendations until after they get the results from the full 500-foot radii that they're doing. But I would agree that we would have to do the, the benefit analysis of, if there is only the one, do we, you know, what's the cost, is it cost-effective? Is it a benefit to the resident, it's a benefit to time and on-task for our staff? All of that comes into play when we discuss it. If it's nine properties.
Right.
What does that look like? And is it nine of those, or are we looking at a much larger conversation about actual water distribution to that area as opposed to private wells?
Right.
So, there's a whole, you know, list of category of conversations we would have, but it really is dependent on what the results come back as.
Correct.
I think we need to do a bit more monitoring of all of them, some, these actions to determine if.
Right, the scope changes before we.
Yeah, I mean.
Determine any change in our permanent.
Yeah, they may come back with one house, one, the, the current one that was affected is the only one that's affected, and then we look at, what does it look like for a permanent solution as opposed to bottled water forever?
Right, correct.
Now, I'd imagine the provisions, say, providing water, we do continued maintenance and monitoring, should those miraculously go away, then those provisions stop.
I don't know if it contemplates that, because I think they assume once it's there, it's, it's there.
I mean, the half-life, I think, is like 4 million years, so we're, I think we're, it's going to be around for a while.
Right. But as you'll see in your next proposal, there's expanded PFAS testing that now exists in the, in the ongoing maintenance. And so, yes, knowing that this is here, that will be an ongoing testing requirement in our annual process. So, that is true.
Okay.
But I would, I would pursue that if there's multiple clean tests, that there should be a process to go backward.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I was, you know, getting at, and I don't, I don't know if there will ever be a.
Well, if you can filter it out, then, like, can filter out.
Right.
Correct. So, well, you're filtering out through a man-made filter, you know.
Right.
But, yeah, having that worked in, if it is, you know, I, I think looking at a long-term solution outside of somebody delivering bottled water makes sense regardless of whether it's one house or all of them, so.
Yep.
We'll see what, we'll see what happens after the testing's done. Do you need a motion for this?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to engage tie-in bond for the LSP Services Immediate Response Action Activities at the Maple Avenue Landfill Area in the amount of $25,900 for sampling, reporting, and support services.
Not to exceed 25,900, because they did say it would be actual.
Okay.
Make an amendment to that not to exceed $25,900, and to authorize Town Administrator Brian Smith to execute all agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number nine is the standard one.
Yeah, review of the FY '25 Post-Closure Landfill Monitoring Engineering Services Proposal by tie-in bond for Sid, same Maple Avenue landfill.
So, yes, this is your annual process, this has been modified with the PFAS requirements that were added to our, our annual procedures as of October. So, you made an amendment last year to do that work, this is the first year, it's, it's included in the initial proposal.
Right, it's in task one, because we added it last year to task one.
Right.
Yep. And here we are.
Correct. And we had budgeted for this, so we had anticipated this.
Questions or concerns?
Make a motion, we engage tie-in bond for the FY '25 Post-Closure Landfill Monitoring Engineering Services Proposal not to exceed $25,600.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Review and issuance of the 2024 State Primary Election Warrant.
Not a whole lot to discuss unless you found a typo that the state did.
If I did, I don't think I'd make a motion to fix it.
Yeah, we don't have that authority to fix it anyway, so I'll make a motion that we approve the warrant for the 2024 State Primary Election as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the warrants are next to you for signature.
Thank you.
That warrant, the election warrant.
Review of the Senior Citizen Property Tax Workoff Program Policy First Read. I'll venture a guess, so red, we'll talk about it next meeting. Unless there's any comments tonight.
It's a first read.
It's a first read.
There's some comments, there's some notes on it that I put on it, Bets put some on there for me, thank you, Bets. A lot of the policy was written by Brian before he left for vacation. I did, if you look, there's supporting documents that go with it. The application and informational is brand new, it's been fully reformatted, thank you Town of Amherst, they had a really nice format, and I, I liked it, so I repurposed it for the Town of Irving. I'm not going to reinvent the wheel, if somebody has a good format out there, let's use it. But again, it's a first read, so obviously, there's some discussion about dates, times.
Methods.
Methods, dollar amounts, read it all, and we can have a more thorough conversation on the 26th.
And one additional piece, just to bring some focus to, there's a, an income limit qualification under the eligibility section, that was informed, our current one reflects this, and this was informed by another exemption that the assessing office processes. But I don't believe that the three of you have ever had a conversation about what the income eligibility requirement should be, and as you were looking at examples, I'm sure you saw there was a variety of ways that the.
They range from 35 and 55, like, we had up to 64 and 74, 64 and 73, so there's a varying array of what those.
Methodologies.
Income levels, yeah.
And this contemplates a one or two-person household, and I'm assuming that is, again, anticipating that it's simply just a, a single or a married couple, I'm assuming that's what it's implying, but I saw some examples that had.
I saw one that went up to a family of, I think, eight as an example.
I don't know how applicable that is to us.
They, they cap it, and, you know, they have an incremental, and they cap it, I didn't put all of them in there, I figured that could be part of our discussion.
Right.
Of how far we want to go with it.
Some of those tables just say plus this per, beyond.
Well, I think one of them was 1, 2, 3, 4 plus.
Yeah, and then plus per after that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, whatever, as the three of you have those conversations, whatever you want for data to help you inform what you want your thresholds to be, just let me know, and we'll, we'll gather that for you.
Okay.
I just saw the variety of options out there, so clearly, every town's taking a different approach. Ours just came from this other process that was already in, in habit. I don't know if that meets the, the need or if it should be adjusted, so.
Yeah, I'll just call into question, there's some stuff in there, there's some, when you see the notes and you pull up the comments, things about, we are about to put the STM through that says somebody could do the work in their stead, but we have no language about who, how, who gets authorized, how we vet that person, you know, so I tried to put some language in there, not even sure, it would have to go through legal to make sure it works, I don't know if those, you know, there's a lot of.
Nuance.
Unknows, unknown nuances.
Do we have the, the two-per-household piece on here too?
Yes.
And determine selection, is that all kind?
I tried to triage out.
I didn't get to read that yet.
So, there is, you know, only one person up to the first 10, if there is space, you can go to somebody who has done it before, but not in the previous year, so.
So, you work your way down through the tiers.
You can't go, you can't go back-to-back years unless there's still capacity to do that, and then it would be the person who's back-to-back years, and then it would be the second person within one household, so I tried to triage them out about, you know, how you have that priority list, but it needs some work still, this is a very first draft.
Yeah, I think it's a great cert.
Okay, thank you, both. Anything else tonight?
Nope.
No.
Then, our next scheduled meeting is the 26th at 6:30, and tentatively at 6:00, we'll have a joint before the STM on the 28th on that Wednesday.
Yep.
Make a motion to adjourn at 9:30.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, have a good night.